Okay. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority meeting of Tuesday, May 2, 2023. Please stand and join for the National Anthem as we play a video of Janet Trevoni singing the National Anthem and remain standing, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance together.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay, now it's time for our moment of solemn expression, and again, we're proud to be led by Pastor David Mann from Calvary Chapel. Pastor Mann, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, we come before you again this evening, and we ask, Lord, your blessing upon, Lord, our mayor, the entire city council present here, our city manager, our attorney, our city clerk, all of the offices and departments, Lord, that make up the operations here, our Public Works Division, the entire staff, Lord, we just lift them up to you tonight, and in all the days ahead, this month of May, we're thankful for them. We pray for our police department. We pray, Father, for the chief and all the staff, the fire and rescue, the fire chief and all his staff, Lord, bless them as they keep us safe and protected in their duties of office. The water department here in the city, we ask your blessings upon their operations, Lord, as well, and all the 108,000 citizens here in Costa Mesa, Lord, we ask your blessing in keeping upon them, Lord, each tonight and in the days ahead. Lord, we thank you for your goodness, for your graces, and for your great love, and we're reminded, Lord, by the plaque on the wall behind us. In you, Lord, we trust, and your faithfulness towards us certainly demands our present trust in the decisions and in the things, Lord, that are before us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Marr.
Here.
Councilmember Gamaros.
Here.
Councilmember Harper.
Here.
Mayor Protem Harlan.
Here.
Mayor Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Prezioci, our acting city attorney, is there any closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council recessed into closed session at approximately 4:00 p.m. this evening, recessed back out at approximately 5:50 this evening. The city council had three items on the agenda: conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, three cases, assuming to California Government Code Section 54956, Point 9, Subsection D, Subsection 2, and the city council took no report of action on any of those three items.
Thank you, council. And now we have two presentations, two great presentations today. We're going to kind of combine them into one, but they're two distinct teams, and we're very proud of both of these teams from the great city of Costa Mesa. Tonight, we are proud to recognize Vanguard University Men's Volleyball Team for winning the 2023 NAIA National Championship. This winter and spring, get this, the Lions were left without a gym. Their former gym, as you may remember, was nicknamed "The Pit," and it has been demolished, and it's going to be completely redone as the beautiful new Freed Center for Leadership and Service right across the parking lot. So they had to hold their matches at OCC in Calvary Chapel High School, and they practiced wherever they could, but despite these circumstances, unique circumstances for the Lions, they knew where they wanted to go by the end of the season. They wanted a national championship. And they got there. They got to the promised land. This is Vanguard Men's Volleyball Team's first national title in the history of the school, and it's the fourth NAIA team championship for Vanguard Athletics overall. The city council, we are all very proud of you, these outstanding and remarkable athletes, and we commend you for a very, very good job done.[439.47][439.47](APPLAUSE). Now, I'd like to call up to the podium their coach, the great coach, Brian Rofer, who's going to come and tell a little bit about the team and provide certificates to each one of the players. And then, once we're done with that, players, as I told your coach, go either to that side or the other side, and then we'll do the beach volleyball team next, okay? Coach, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for inviting us here. For me, it's really important that these teams, both these teams, for what they did this year representing Vanguard University and the city of Costa Mesa, what they went through, the grit was what they have with the university's athletic department, that was our goal. And these guys and these ladies actually did an amazing feat going through what they did this year. It's hard to win. It's hard to win anything. All you know that when you have your campaigns, it's just not easy. And what these young men and women did, it was just phenomenal. And again, I greatly appreciate you guys recognizing them because they deserve every bit of it. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. So first, first-team members, I'll just open these things, actually, he's not here. A lot of them are in finals right now, so some of them weren't able to be here. Andrew Palotto is one of our setters. Evan Troncoso is here. Ryan Smith, our setter, All-American. Cody Watts, who's our middle hitter, is in a final right now. Ryland Coser, libero. Tanner Woods, who's expecting twins right now, is not here, and rightfully so. Player of the Year, the National Player of the Year, and Athlete of the Year at Vanguard, Kyle Nenema, our captain. Colin Hassan, outside hitter. Matthew Rosson, opposite hitter. Cameron Vishel, middle blocker. Andrew Chevlin, freshman, who came and just did an amazing job for us in the finals. Our starting libero, Ryan Jew. Our middle blocker, Micah Sembesma. Another one of our All-Americans, Valesis Baisway. Middle blocker Glenn Linden is in the final right now. Logan Finley, outside hitter, middle blocker. Outside hitter Elliot Winter. Jacob Van Groningen, outside hitter. Caleb Melick, outside hitter, libero. And another All-American, opposite hitter, Will Anderson. And I just, again, would like to thank all of you for having our guys here today. It means a lot. And I also like to thank our athletic director, Jeffrey Bissell, who's, I know, somewhere in the building. Thank you very much.
Jeffrey's back there with our friend David Vasquez, and thank you, David, for always promoting Vanguard in such a positive way. Okay, so you're in exactly the right spot, so then we're going to do the same thing for the women's team, the beach team, and then we'll take a picture of you, and then take a picture of them, and then if we can get a wide enough angle on our lens, we'll get us all together. Okay, so now, we move on to the presentation of Vanguard University's Women's Beach Volleyball NAIA National Champions. Tonight, we're proud to recognize the Vanguard University Women's Beach Volleyball Team for winning the 2023 NAIA National Championship against Corbin University. Through injuries, bad weather, they didn't tear down your court, but I mean, you know, where are you going to go to the beach when it's raining like it was? So, bad weather, this team's determination, won their program's, again, their program's first national championship. Following the tournament, the NAIA named coach Christopher Dorn, who's right here with us, as the National Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Coach Dorn. 2023 was a big year in the blue and gold, which is the Vanguard Lions, bringing in three first-time national championships. Again, the city of Costa Mesa, the Costa Mesa City Council, and myself as the mayor are very, very proud of your accomplishments. Now, Coach Dorn, Mr. National Coach of the Year, if you could come up to the podium and provide a little bit about your team and the certificates.
Thank you very much, and I want to echo Brian. This is an honor, so thank you very much. We are incredibly proud of these young women for kind of the grit and determination you were just talking about. There are times where, you know, we show up to the beach before the sun's out, and so it's a whole different kind of beach experience, but they fought through that every day, and even times where we were hailed off the court this season, because why not? It's Southern California. But this is a group that's also been undefeated the last three seasons in our conference tournament, and just very proud of how they keep coming back and keep pressing through things, keep pressing through things. So I know Brian mentioned grit. That's definitely one of our key words as well, but I also want to mention that they pursued joy, because joy can be in happiness and sadness and whatever season you're in. So very proud of these ladies. So thank you again for having us.
All right.
All right. We have about eight that are in finals and working right now, so get these. Anna Broadhead. Bailey Coffin. Well, at least we're finding all the ones who are not here right now. It's good. All-American and all-conference player, Morgan Nash. Assistant coach extraordinaire, Shannon Evans. And we don't have one for you, Emily, but come on up. Emily Hall, please, Emily Hall.
Emily, we'll get you one. Okay, so let's do it a little differently because of the way you guys are arranged there. Let's do the ladies first. Women will take the picture first, then we'll go with the men. Council, let's meet them up in the front.
Congratulations, Coach. Thank you for coming.
Everyone fall short, not just me.
Okay. Yeah, I know. You're the reason why we're doing this.
Thank you.
Okeydoke. So those are our only two presentations, so now we're going to go to public comment. The rules for public comment are everybody gets three minutes, up to three minutes. You don't have to take three minutes. Frequently, the shorter public comments are the ones that are most effective. You can talk about anything other than what's on the agenda. For the items that are on the agenda, you have to wait till those are called, and then you provide your comment on those items. We'll go from people in the council first, in the chambers. We'll go from one side to the other, and then we'll take the folks on Zoom. So again, you get up to three minutes. You can talk about anything that's not on the agenda. Let's start with Ms. Lester at my left. You have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Sue Lester. I was here a month ago to talk about the Wildlife Center, and I wanted to come and say thank you. The police department reached out to me immediately. I had a great meeting with Sergeant Barnes, and I've actually talked to some people in the command staff there, and everybody that I've talked to has been really positive about moving forward and with the city supporting the Wildlife Center. And I also wanted to mention, because I think this is important for people to know, that even though support for the Wildlife Center has come up in the past, it was never brought before this particular council, this particular city manager, or this particular police chief. And I think it's important that people know that, because you only know what's going on if people come in and say something. So I want to thank you in advance for moving in the direction of supporting the Wildlife Center. I also wanted to let you know that if there's a way that we can speed up the process some way, where you need additional information or anything like that, I'm happy to talk to anybody who has any questions. I also wanted to let you guys know that the Wildlife Center is having a fundraiser. It's called the Baby Shower, because it's baby season, on Saturday, May 20, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Overflow parking is being provided at the beach at no cost for anyone that wants to attend, and there's going to be a lot of educational events or educational things and games and prizes for children and adults alike, and it will be one of the days where tours will actually be able to be conducted in certain areas of the hospital for people that are interested. So I'm telling all of you in hopes that maybe you will be interested in come, but also to see if it would be okay if you guys kind of helped promote it on the Costa Mesa Minute or if that's appropriate. I know it's an event that's held outside of the city, but it is for an entity that serves our city, so it would be great if we could do that. And then the last thing is, I just wanted to say thank you for Earth Day. That is such a great event. Every year, I went last year, and this year was even better, and I was there, obviously, to have fun and take part, but I also had the opportunity to volunteer with the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, because I'm on the advisory committee there, and so I just wanted to say thank you. I know a lot of times people come down here and you guys take a lot of virtual punches on the chin for things, and so I thought it was important that I came back to say thank you in advance for what we're going to do going forward. I would stick around, and I'm interested in hearing what all of you guys have to say, but I have another appointment I have to go to, so I don't want you to think I'm just like barking something at you and running out the door. So I'll be watching to see if you comment. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, you have the floor.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank our Public Works Department and specifically the subcontractor West Coast Arborists for the absolute wonderful job that they did on the trees lining Fair Drive. Next slide, please. I have lived in this neighborhood for 53 years and have marveled every year at the beauty of these trees that start at Harbor Boulevard on both sides of Fair and go all the way to Fairview. This year particularly, just two or three days ago, when I was walking, I was stunned by the beauty of these trees, walking underneath them, next to them. As a pedestrian, we love the shade and the beauty of trees. Next slide. The pictures speak for themselves, absolutely gorgeous trees and so beautifully pruned. Next slide. Looking up as a pedestrian, I could see the sky and the branches. The pruning is absolutely spectacular. Next slide. This tree is just about 50 feet from my house. I am a tree hugger. I love the giving tree, and I thank the city of Costa Mesa for its careful caring of our trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council.
Mr. Humphrey.
Good evening, city council. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. First, I would like to once again thank the city for providing a service to help hearing deficient people actively participate with their city council and their city. Thank you very much for that opportunity and that service. Secondarily, I'm still waiting with bated breath for that Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. I guess it's been a thing we've been talking about for a while. In 2016, it came to the council. None of you folks were on at that time, but it came to the council, and it was received and filed. In 2020, it also came to the council again, and was basically said that they were looking for direction on starting a Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, and in April of 2021, even in the SACIOKA Development Agreement extension, they talked about the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And you guys all talked about it when you made Measure K. And I got no problem with it, but how does Measure K work without that Inclusionary Housing Ordinance? It still seems to be in the works. I appreciate the fact that you are moving forward on it. I would just like to see it show up. I've watched the planning commission, as I was explained by Mr. Harland that it was going to be in the planning commission, and maybe I missed it, but I haven't seen it there yet. So I'm just looking forward to seeing the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Many cities in Orange County have one, so it shouldn't be that difficult for us to come up with one, even ones that allow for financial changes and putting money somewhere else, some other fund. There's all kinds of ways to word them, and they seem to be tried. I would love to see the one that you guys try so that you can, in fact, use that which the public voted on, Measure K, which actually seems to require an Inclusionary Housing Ordinance or a development agreement, depending on which ones you care to use. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Juan Atrejo.
My name is Juan Atrejo.
Y vivo en el Distrito Número Tres.
And I live in District Three.
Hoy día vengo a agradecerles
Today I come to thank you
por las reuniones que tuvimos con algunos miembros del Consilio.
For the meetings that we held with some of the council members.
Andrea y el señor John vinieron al Distrito Número Tres a caminar con nosotros.
Andrea and John came over to District Three to walk with us.
Y estamos agradecidos porque nos dieron algunas soluciones para los problemas de nuestras comunidades.
And we're grateful because they gave us some solutions for the problems that we have in our communities.
También les queremos agradecer por la participación que ha habido de parte de ustedes en el Distrito Número Dos y en el Distrito Número Cuatro con las ferias de recursos.
We also wanted to thank you for the participation that you've shown in District Two and District Four with the Resource Fairs.
Creo que ha sido algo bien importante a la participación también de la policía para que la gente empiece a crear esa comunicación y esa confianza que no existe.
I think it's very important to have had that participation also from the police so that people can start building that communication and that trust that doesn't exist.
Creo que es muy importante el trato de ustedes hacia la gente que representan.
I think it's really important how you treat the people that you represent.
Porque estuvimos la semana pasada en Sacramento
Because last week we were in Sacramento
Abogando por la SB 567, que es sobreviviendas
Advocating for SB 567, which has to do with housing
Y nuestro representante en el Congreso Y nuestro representante en el Congreso.
And a representative at the Congress.
Quitó partes esenciales de esa propuesta.
Removed essential parts from that bill.
Como un control de renta.
Like rent control.
Y nos trató como criminales.
And we were treated as criminals.
Sin importarle que iban familias completas con niños incluidos.
No matter the fact that full families showed up with children.
Y no le importó ver lo que los niños estaban sintiendo cuando sus padres estaban siendo amenazados de ser arrestados.
And he didn't care when the children were seeing that the parents were being threatened with being arrested.
Las reuniones que hemos tenido con ustedes.
The meetings that we've held with you all.
Me enseñado a aprender.
Have shown me to learn.
El sistema que tienen ustedes para trabajar aquí en la ciudad.
So learn about the system that you have here to work here in the city.
Lo único que puedo decirles es gracias.
The only thing I can really say is thank you.
Por mostrar empatía por los problemas de la gente que ustedes representan.
For showing empathy for the problems that people that you represent have.
Porque tenemos algunos representantes.
Because we do have some representatives.
Que no les importan los problemas de la gente que representan.
That don't care about the problems that people that they represent have.
Sé que nos dieron recomendaciones.
I know you all gave us recommendations.
Y ahora nada más nosotros vamos a estar vigilando que se lleven a cabo.
And now we're just going to be vigilant about them actually happening.
Tenemos líderes del Distrito Número Dos.
We have some District Two leaders here.
Que quieren conocer a su representante y que también camine con ellos.
Who want to meet the representatives to have them also walk with them.
Y sabemos que Manuel próximamente lo va a hacer en su distrito.
And we know that Manuel is going to soon be doing that in his district.
Gracias y que Dios los bendiga.
Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kim Hendricks and I'm here tonight to talk to you about longtime Costa Mesa resident, Dr. Richard Maron, who passed away April 6, 2023. He died peacefully, surrounded by his family after a long struggle with illness. He was 86 years old. Dr. Maron grew up in Monrovia, California, and attended both Pasadena City College and the University of Southern California, where he earned his dentistry degree in 1961. Maron enlisted in the United States Air Force and was stationed in Manila, where he was a dentist at Clark Air Force Base. He attained the rank of captain. Upon his return home, he set up a practice in Newport Beach and his practice thrived for 47 years because of his dedication to excellence and his comforting bedside manner. He was a member of the American Dental Association. Can you turn it? Oh, thank you, you are doing it. Okay. He was a member of the American Dental Association and was one of just a dozen dentists in Orange County at the time to earn the prestigious Mastership Award from the American Academy of Dentistry. When he wasn't taking care of patients, Dr. Maron had many passions. He was instrumental in the saving of Fairview Park, serving as the first president of the Fairview Park Preservation Alliance in 2015. And he, and his alliance oversaw passage of Measure AA in 2016 to ensure the park would continue in perpetuity in its natural state. The beauty and tranquility of this preserved open space is a lasting legacy for the citizens of Orange County. Dr. Maron was a big advocate of the Orange County Model Engineers who operate their trains at Fairview Park and allow people to get close to nature without trampling it. He loved to take his grandchildren for rides on the train. He was also passionate about soccer, coaching boys in the American Youth Soccer Organization for 13 years, which included his surviving son, Mark Maron. One of his most cherished coaching accomplishments was taking his team to Clydebank, Scotland to play the Golden Hill Boys Club, who also hosted the team. Dr. Maron was a longtime member of the Mariners Lions Club of Newport Beach. He presided over many fish fries and fundraisers that helped to improve his community. He was also a parishioner at St. Simon and Jude Catholic Church in Huntington Beach. He survived by his bride of 61 years, services and his children and grandchildren. Services will be held on Friday, June 16 at 11:00 a.m. at St. Simon and Jude in Huntington Beach. In place of flowers, donations may be made to the Fairview Park Alliance, the Orange County Model Engineers, or Hoag Hospice. May Dr. Maron's legacy live on. Thank you.
All right. Ms. McDonald.
I have a presentation. Okay, yes. Cynthia McDonald, Costa Mesa resident. I'm here to talk about Triangle Square, the shopping center at the gateway to our downtown that is suffering from disrepair and a lot of empty units. The busiest place is a bar whose servers are dressed in neon swimsuits and has to hire private security because the center doesn't have any. Next slide, please. The proposed change in the signage program for LED billboards started in 2020. I've been told that application is still pending despite the denial by the planning commission in 2021. In November 13, 2012, a prior planning commission expressly denied the use of third-party advertising at this location, and no amendment to the signing program has altered that. Now the third-party sign for Providence is advertising primary care, urgent care, and specialty care. Next slide, please. This is concerning because this banner is falsely advertising that medical care is available in this building. Sometimes people who are having a medical issue don't always catch nuances. If this banner causes someone who is looking for urgent care to drive into the center, they will not find the care they need. All they will find is a sign for the one long-broken and rusty electronic kiosk that has never worked. Next slide. I would hate to think that someone's health was jeopardized because they were misled by false advertising. The Providence billboards have been up on the dome since either late 2020 or early 2021. That's at least two years of income off the banners. When the owner proposed LED billboards, we were told that the income from them would be used to improve the center. But despite income from the illegal third-party advertising, the center continues to deteriorate. Next slide, please. Be careful not to trip on the loose tile that is taped down with duct tape. Watch for the exposed rebar in the dark parking structure and the broken rusty light with exposed wiring. Next slide, please. If the elevators don't work, so those with disabilities are forced to find other access. If there was a fire, you can't use the elevators anyway, but try using the stairway. Whoops. And then there is this missing fire extinguisher. I don't know where the money from the CAM charges is going. I don't know where the money from the billboards is going. I can tell you, it isn't going into maintaining or improving the center. I wish I could give you a whiff of the parking structure. It reminds me of a corner of the New York City subway where the drunks relieved themselves, and that's what's happening at Triangle Square. This is what represents Costa Mesa to visitors of Triangle Square. What the owner is doing with the center and the billboard is dangerous. Perhaps the fire department will inspect the center. It is well past time for the city to tell the owner to clean up its act and stop the illegal third-party advertising. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Ida Wolf. I've been here before and you have been very kind. I want to thank you. When I first started going to the senior center after the COVID, it looked like Wally World. Nothing worked. But I want to thank you for getting the ice machine fixed in the kitchen and the broken Coke machine out and the new felt on our pool tables and the heat fixed. But today, if you would pass these out, can I get these passed out? Please. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
You can go ahead and keep talking.
Can I? Okay. Today I'm here because we want a microwave down in the sunroom and everybody wants it. And they have a big water thing in there that we don't need because water comes out of the tap and we've got a sink. They put a little toy ice machine in there. And another thing is in the ladies restroom, they have two dispensers for soap, but there's only one that's always filled. So I don't know what they're doing with the soap. And we want to be open at 8:00. They are in there before 8:00 and they won't let anybody in until 9:00. Now they have trips going out of there. They come in earlier, they won't open the door. So finally they opened the door and the people go in and then I go in and they said, are you going on the trip? And I said, no. And then I said, well, I have to use the restroom. And it was 5:00 till 9:00. So I, all the other senior centers are open at 8:00. And I want to see our Costa Mesa Center back to normal and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, from my favorite childhood baseball team, the Royals. You have the floor. You can bring the, bring the mic down closer.
Hi, my name is Nick Vazanilic and I'd like to talk about, and I'd like to talk about September 2021. In that meeting, this council voted to allow flying at Fairview Park. I like to fly models and I used to go to the flying fields, but now I have to drive 30 minutes away. Thank you for your time and please reopen the flying fields.
Got it, got it, Nick. Okay, that's your one shot, though. Now when we call it up, you can't, you can't talk. You got, you made, you made your point. We made an exception for Nick, but from now on, anybody, just the things that are not on our agenda. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Lawrence Quarter. Larry, you can call me.
Hi, Larry.
Was on with Dick Maron on several committees. And I've only got a few words to say about Dick because a lot has been said about him. I think intelligent, kind, smart, family, caring for others and his surroundings. I knew Dick for quite a long time, but unfortunately, not as a best friend. I would like to. We were both heads of Fairview Park Friends Committees at several, several, separate times. I was a businessman in Costa Mesa where the city tried to rezone me on 18th Street. I solved that by getting all the businesses together, came back and talked to the city, and they changed their mind. I was appointed to a committee to rewrite that zoning ordinance with Judge Mark Soden and President of OCC at that time. I was a founding member of the Redevelopment Agency. So I've been around the block, but not lately. I would like to keep you perfectly aware of Fairview Park, which probably should be not called the park, should be called Fairview Park Preserve. People don't understand what a preserve is if you say, I'm going to the park. So please pay attention. I'll have a lot more to offer after this. So be sharp, be helpful like you always been, and we'll talk to you then. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, President Anderson, you have the floor.
I am here in my unofficial capacity as a Costa Mesa resident. And it was very lovely to follow a Newport Mesa student who came to advocate for himself. So that was delightful. I am here this evening really just as a longtime Costa Mesa apartment renter and to support and to amplify what Juana Triho and several of the other residents have been coming to speak to you about. I have lived a majority, after growing up in a house in Westside Costa Mesa, I have lived a majority of my life in apartments in our city. There are many realities that house or condo owners and residents do not realize about apartment rental properties. The number one misconception is if, if a resident pays their rent, their home will be in turn well-maintained. This has not always been my experience, nor that of my neighbors. A majority of tenants choose their apartments first and foremost because of costs. Apartment renters often do not know their rights. It is quite rare for lease to have an attachment on tenant rights, or what is the definition of uninhabitable. They do not know that a landlord must treat and remove all mold, water damage, provide gas and heating, safe stairs, rails and floors, and secure sanitary properties, and even adequate trash storage or collection. I would like to see more attention on code enforcement and providing adequate care for our existing renters. If we don't focus here first, when the housing market becomes even more limited than it already is, landlords may be tempted to flip their properties and raise their rents even more. We've seen this happen repeatedly, especially on streets like Center Street or in Avocado. It damages our community when families must move because their rents are dramatically increased. Many do not know about the rental increase limits and oftentimes apartments are fully renovated and long-term residents are forced out of their homes. Again, I appreciate all of the attention on creating more affordable units. I would ask that you please consider all that you can to best care for the existing renters in our city who consider Costa Mesa home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, you have the floor. Oh, you've got a presentation? It's good.
It's, it's up. Thank you.
Excellent.
Costa Mesa residents felt the sting from the city council and the unlimited developer money that funded the questionable Measure K, which was passed by 22 votes and an abundance of shenanigans. Now a statewide coalition of nonpartisans has been formed. It's called Our Neighborhood Voices. It's readying to file a new initiative statewide to give the cities their local control back. The three and a half million units mandated by the governor has affected every city in California with a cookie cutter approach. Number one photo that's up on the, the monitor now. This is a project that has actually been submitted and is being reviewed in San Francisco. It's quite shocking because the background are all single-family homes. Weiner, who is a major political proponent of these mandated building demands, said of this photo, this is quite unfortunate. Well, he made and passed a law, so I guess he didn't foresee what were some of the possibilities that could resonate from those laws. The statewide initiative will be filed by July 1st. It will take a statewide village to get the needed signatures to get this on the November 24 ballot. Please go to this website. It's ourneighborhoodvoices.com. The initiative is backed by SCAG, which is an organization that represents 180 cities. In fact, I believe it represents us as well. And so far, 40 additional cities have jumped on board with the initiative and supporting it. Developer money will be another hurdle. Developers will fight like hell to avoid giving up billions and billions of dollars in profits. Costa Mesa, I'd like to invite you to join this statewide initiative. But I ask every resident to read, support, and rescind this crazy housing plan and get on with some real planning and some real low-income housing. We need it. This is just going around the block to get it with a bunch of market housing. Developers don't rule. The voters do. Those residents that live here, they call it home and they're going to be stuck with all of this disaster that's looming in Sacramento. This is a statewide groundswell to return planning and zoning back to local governments. Again, go to ourneighborhoodvoices.com. There is a Zoom meeting every Wednesday at 6:00. The information is provided from people all over the state of California and believe me, it's eye-opening. If you care about Costa Mesa, if you care about California, give yourself one hour to take a look at some of the facts going on with the ourneighborhoodsvoice.com.
Thank, thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to be heard in the, in the chambers? Okay, I don't see anybody. So we're now going to Zoom, Madam Clerk. Anybody on, on Zoom?
Yes, our first speaker is Jen Tanaka.
Ms. Tanaka, you have, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, City Council and staff. Tonight, I actually just want to make a few brief comments about our traffic calming installations that we've been doing. And as you know, I'm really excited about these builds, but we've also gotten a lot of questions from residents about what these builds are, to the point that there's clearly some confusion out there. So I just wanted to take a step back and talk about why they are important and how I think we and how I think we can improve the program. And to that end, I've asked the city clerk to put up a slide from, for my presentation, just showing two things. The first part is the best estimate I could find of our current mode share between bicycling, walking, transit, and cars, as well as the second part showing our recommended mode share, our target mode share from our adopted circulation element. Now, I think these recommended mode share splits are really, really important. And if we achieve them, I think we can make a lot of people's lives better. And that's simply because we're at a point where we can't expand our right-of-way anymore. And we, but we, on the other hand, we're also going to need our roads to move more people than ever. So if we can do these different mode shares, I think that we can give people a lot of choices. We can give them lower-cost choices is important, given our cost of living crisis that we're in right now. And it'll also help maintain road space for people who need to drive. But as you can see, about 80% of our trips right now are in a car. And for the last, you know, until the last five, six years, almost all of our street improvements have been intended to improve throughput for cars. So when Costa Masons see public works roll out plastic straws, they understandably assume that it's all part of a construction project that's trying to make cars move faster. And when these builds that we put in seem to do the opposite and then stick around for months, it causes a lot of confusion. So these builds are not like a typical roadway improvement and we shouldn't be putting them in the ground just assuming everyone's going to understand. So I just had a couple of suggestions. First, we clearly need to explain what we're doing. This goes beyond surveying residents. I really urge staff to consider posting large, physical, readable signs in English and Spanish around the install sites that describe why we're doing the build, what we're trying to accomplish, how long the build will be installed, and how we're going to evaluate them. I've seen the staff reports on these and I know they're already doing incredible work and detailed work on them, but keeping the information buried in a staff report isn't going to help the public understand. And then we need to commit to and disclose what will happen next. All of the impacted residents should be given a survey to rate the installation. And the city should disclose in that survey what they'll do with the results. If we aren't ready to commit to a beautiful, value-enhancing install, we shouldn't be doing the traffic study in the first place. And too often, we're doing these installs only to rip them out and permanently install some third option no one asked for or got to experience. And I think that needs to stop. So when we are shifting mode share, we're trying to raise the attractiveness of alternate modes. That means we really, really need to focus the, on educating the public around the benefits of everything we're doing to achieve those goals. Otherwise, we're going to lose support for these programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next, Madam Clerk?
Hank Castanetti, please.
Hank, it's good to hear from you. You have the floor. Hank?
Hank, we can't hear you.
Should we go on to the next person and come back to Hank?
We have no further speakers.
Oh, then we're stuck with Hank. All right, Hank. You gotta, you gotta get it together. Get your act together, Hank. Are you, you trying to unmute yourself?
Is your volume up, Hank?
That's all right. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got Hank.
Good grief. As you can see, my computer skills are rather lacking. Hey, I want to, good evening, council, staff, and all the good residents of Costa Mesa. I'm here tonight obviously representing the Orange County Model Engineers. We operate the McQuillfats and Gold Hill Junction Railroad in beautiful Fairview Nature Park. Last month, we continued on a, on a record-breaking trajectory of free rides. We gave 3,367 free rides. We had an Easter Bunny and we had a lot of happy little kids there who went home with Easter eggs. In addition, this past weekend, we had our annual spring meet. And that's a tradition in our hobby where clubs invite anyone that has a train that'll fit on their tracks to come on over and play trains with them. Well, we, we're so unique in, in, in our venue. Most of the other parks, the other clubs are in parks that are manicured with baseball diamonds and soccer fields. We were, they, people were astounded at the, the nature and, and the, just the glory of Fairview Park. Riding the trains right now, it's almost like you're riding in a canyon of, of flowers and vegetation. It's just spectacular. So also, I also wanted to expand just one, one other thing. Jim Hendrick's kind words about Dick Marin were, just were wonderful. And in addition to his funeral services at the same time in Jude Church, immediately following that, at the Norma Herzog Community Center will be a celebration of his life. And his family has, has, has asked me to invite everyone who knew him and would like to participate, please come on over. It probably will start at around 12:30 again at the Norma Herzog Community Center. And one last thing, I wanted to just say that we're, we're thrilled that we're on a trajectory to give probably the most rides this year than any year in the 30-year history of the train. And it's, we hope that we will be, if it continues the way it has been, we will easily break 30,000 free rides this year. And that's a pretty amazing feat. So once again, thank you all for, for participation. If you're a train nut or if you have a little one who loves Thomas or Chuggie then, come on over, fill out an application, join the club. It's open to anyone. And we will teach you how to run our trains. One of our, our gasoline-powered trains typically runs about $20,000. This is not a little kid hobby, as well understand. And a slide steam engine is double or triple that. But you don't have to buy a train. You don't have to buy any of that stuff. Just come on over.
Hank, you were worth the wait, but your three minutes are up.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, my friend.
No further speakers.
Okay, no further speakers. Closed public comment. Thanks, thanks, Hank. Beautifully done. Okay, now we're going to move to councilmember reports, comments, and suggestions. First up from District Four is Manuel Chavez. Councilmember Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you, everyone, for joining us today. I'll be brief. I had the pleasure of this Wednesday joining Families Forward at the Affordable Housing Awards for their bungalow project in District Four. For those that don't know, Righteous Street from Pomona Elementary School, they've developed this nice property that's going to be for affordable housing units for families that are either at risk of homelessness or have been homeless before. This project created, not only did they rehab the existing apartments in that complex, they, they added 280Us to make it even more affordable for families. So I just want to say thank you so much, Families Forward, for choosing District Four for this site. I'm very honored that their hard-working determination got them an award because not only did it help create new homes for families, but it made our city look great and wonderful. Thank you to them. Secondly, I am really pleased with how the Shalimar Community Fair event went this Sunday. I know we've done a lot of efforts in the past year to put a lot more focus on Shalimar because, you know, there's a lot of need in that community. And it was no greater joy than seeing the children talking and playing with our police officers, meeting with, with groups like the Prometores, like CMABs, giving out free bike helmets, just showcasing what an amazing thing can happen when everyone comes together. So to CNPD, thank you for being great partners in this effort. To our city staff, thank you so much for, as always, taking time out of your weekends to do this event for our community. And for all those that came from the community, I hope you realize that we're doing our best to ensure you guys have a better quality of life in this community. Alongside that note, I do want to thank the two speakers that spoke on behalf of the renters today, Juana Trejo and our President, Ashley Anderson. They raised good points that we have to acknowledge as we move forward with the talks of housing. Yes, the answer is we do need more housing. We've not developed enough housing in the past 10 years. But we cannot forget the residents that are also renting as we have these discussions. So I think as we move forward as a city and looking at the more housing options we can develop and we can, we can procure, let's not forget renters that are kind of stuck in a catch-22 of not being able to leave because if they leave their lease of their apartment, the rents have escaped them until they can afford. So I'm very heartfelt that we have some people coming out, talking at every council meeting about these issues. We do hear you. I'm very pleased that my council peers have now gone to see these parts of their districts and they know it's a citywide effort, but it's only the beginning. And we know it's only the beginning. But with that, I want to say thank you, everyone, for joining us. Thanks again for living in this great city and have a great meeting.
Thank you, councilmember. Next up from District Two, Councilmember Lauren Gamaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things. I'm going to be brief this evening. I also had a chance to speak with Juana Trejo and we did speak a lot about some of the constituent needs in the community, including my own district. And one of the things that came up that we had a chance to speak about briefly was in order to classify a home as affordable, you have to have a certain wage. And one of the things we need to remind ourselves of is we need to make livable wages in the community that we live in if we want to live in that community. And some of our communities that we have, affordable is almost $100,000 a year. In order to make enough money to live in an affordable house, you'd have to make almost 50 bucks an hour. We have opportunities in our community to make those wages if we look to advance ourselves. One of the things we're doing right now is we're building freeways, we're building airports, we're building high-speed rails. And that's where you should look if you want to have an opportunity to make these wages. Please reach out. I would be glad to help point someone in any direction they'd like to go if they're interested in doing something like that, including my constituents and anyone that's a member of this community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Next up from District One, Councilmember Donald Harper.
Thank you. First, for the speakers that speak, public comments. Thanks for speaking up. I get the most out of that or I enjoy it the most and appreciate you taking the time. And for the Costa Mesa High School students that are here, forgive us. This is, this, no, I'm kidding. Thanks for coming and thanks for having your teacher bring you out. Hopefully, I think today you've caught a spatter, a broader range of public comments, which is a little bit unique. I'm going to give you a quote that's a Plato quote that I like and I'm going to paraphrase. "If, if smart people don't get involved in government, they're destined to be ruled by fools." Now, I'm not saying anything about us, but, but it's always good to see people come out and, and watch the process and, and get involved. And hopefully, you'll consider that. I didn't go to a council meeting till, well, till I was probably 50 years old. So you're doing a good job. The, the second thing, I'd like this, either the city manager or our Parks Director to address our Costa Mesa Tennis Center RFP process. It's been about 18 months. I've got a lot of people that keep asking me about it. I know a letter was sent to us asking about what the process is, when it's going to finish up and maybe get an understanding. You know, it's, you're welcome not to talk about it or talk about it, but if you want to talk about what, why the process has taken as long as it has taken. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Next up from District Three, Councilmember Andrea Marr.
Yeah, I'll be super quick. Thanks to staff for planning Earth Day. That was wonderful. Great, great activity and it gets bigger and bigger every year. I'm hoping next year we can maybe announce some exciting policy changes from the city perspective as well to go along with Earth Day in terms of how we're going to be more climate-friendly as a city. Thank you to Senora Trejo for her time and spending more time with her in the, in the neighborhood. I'm disappointed about SB 567. That was actually on my list of things to ask staff about tonight was to continue to track the bills in Sacramento that pertain specifically to housing and rents. And it's disappointing to see that that was gutted. And then just a quick reminder for everyone who's an early morning person on Sunday is the marathon, the OC Marathon. And so Irvine Avenue, the area around the fairgrounds are all kind of going to be a mess on Sunday morning. Just bear that in mind as you're trying to travel about the city. Thanks.
Thank you. So next up from District Five, Councilmember Arlis Reynolds.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'll start by also saying hello to especially our young people in the back. It's always good to see you to come. I would love to hear from you too during public comments. So I might send a note to the principals and teachers and ask them to give you some extra points to speak. I had the chance to give a tour to some middle school and high school students a few weeks ago and, and we had a great discussion about what young people in this community would like to see in the city. And, and they had fantastic ideas and I'm sure you all have fantastic ideas as well. Your voice is really, really important and we don't hear a lot from young people. It's been something that, that comes up frequently and I'm, I'm thinking about a lot and, and trying to work on some solutions for is, is just places to be in Costa Mesa that are safe and, and free and comfortable to, to hang out, whether it's, it's parks, better inside spaces to use. One of the ideas that a, a young person shared was that we, we need an arcade in Costa Mesa. When I was here, we had a bowling alley. Or when I was here, when I was your age, we had a bowling alley. And so, you know, these are, we respond a lot to what we hear from the community. So I would really love to, to hear from you all. I don't know if you use email yet, but you've got, send us on e, an email or find us on Instagram. Send us some ideas of things you'd like to see us invest in in Costa Mesa. Your, your voice is really, really important and you are the future in this city. I wanted to share for the, my councilmembers, a few updates from a couple committees and the liaison for. The Active Transportation Committee, always busy trying to support education and projects related to active transportation. I think you all got an email about this being Bike Month and we have Bike to School events on Wednesday this week, so tomorrow morning and then Wednesday next week. I hope you all will join one of those events. The Mobile Home Advisory Committee was a committee that was created three or four years ago and had sort of a stop-start through COVID and some staffing changes. But we've gotten rolling now. This is a committee that meets quarterly and I just wanted to share a couple of updates. Our staff has been excellent in creating a webpage with resources specific to mobile homeowners that is really information, educational, informational. We're working on an outreach strategy to make sure that mobile home residents have, have access to that information, even if they don't have internet access. So we're looking at different ways to reach our mobile home residents. And then we're also working on a dispute resolution process modeling after Huntington Beach, which has a, a process that they've had for a while. So just a quick update on that committee. And, and as we think about support for our renter community, which we know is the majority of Costa Mesa, probably growing. I think it's at least 60, 60% or so. I think it'd be really helpful to think about providing some similar resources or approaches for that, the renter community, aggregating the resources that we already have and making sure that we're continuing to help people be aware of existing resources and then close the gap in access to those resources. So thank you to our, our commenters who continue to remind us to pay attention to, to renters. And, and this was something that we talked a lot about last year as a huge need in our community. And I think there's really good steps that we can take to continue to raise awareness and close access gaps. A couple things to community leaders, of course, the Prometores, the work that you do in continuing to engage and empower community leaders. I think the festivals that you've been a part of and helped promote are, are fantastic in helping connect people with resources. So thank you for that work. And the, thank you also to the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets for your activity. Really appreciated the letter shared on bus shelters. After our first budget meeting, I have talked to staff about some options in our budget to improve amenities at our bus stations, both amenities and the condition of those amenities. As you're moving around the city and you look at our bus stops, you'll, I, I think most of us would agree that there's, there's certainly opportunity for improvement there. I mentioned the, the community fairs or street festivals. There were a couple in the last month or so, one at Paul Arena, one at Shalimar. I think we're, both were fantastic, really nice partnerships between our community organizations and the city. I'd love to see more of that. And one of the things we've discovered as groups try to put these festivals on is that there's a, there's a big barrier. We've got a lot of rules around what you have to do to set up a special event. And so I've been talking to the city manager about ways to sort of streamline, ease the permitting, permitting of events like that and really reduce barriers. So it's easier for community groups, neighborhood groups, to have more street festivals that bring people together in their communities. And a really, really good resource I wasn't aware of that I learned about at one of these festivals is an organization called Project Food Box. And I'd like us to get some information about this. This is a, I think, relatively new opportunity federally funded that provides free groceries delivered to people's doors on a weekly basis for Medi-Cal members. Anyone on Medi-Cal is eligible for free fruits and vegetables delivered to their door every week. Huge opportunity. They have lots of capacity. Let's make sure that we get the Let's make sure that we get the word out about Project Food Box. They're also based in Costa Mesa, which is fantastic. I have to share, Brenda, if you could pull this up, if we have it. So Bike Month, where I'm really excited about an event we've been working on. This is another partnership between the city or Active Transportation Community, other organizations. We have May 27th, it's the Saturday of Memorial Weekend. We've been working on a really big walk-and-roll festival, so biking, walking, skating, scooting. There's going to be training on bike safety, walk safety, and so on. We have over 200 free helmets to give away, thanks to wonderful sponsorships. The Costa Mesa Police Association has donated two bicycles that we'll be raffling off. And then we have an e-bike that we'll be raffling off. So this is a really fantastic festival. I'm really excited that we're supporting it. Bike safety training and e-bike safety training to continue our good work around safe streets in Costa Mesa, so I hope you can be there. And then one more item related to Measure K and our planning. I'd love to see before our next council meeting, just get an update on our planned schedule for the planning and visioning processes that are our next step now that Measure K has passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Now from District Six on the east side, Mayor Pro Tem Jeffrey Harlan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Just to echo some of the comments of my colleagues, I'm glad Councilmember Chavez brought up the Families Forward project, and I'm glad it's gotten the recognition it deserves. It's an excellent project. We're very proud to have it in our city. What I would like to note of it, we were at the grand opening a few months ago. So many people involved in a project, even a small project like that, and an affordable housing project that has such difficulty even getting built. You talked about difficulty for market rate. Affordable housing is even more difficult. So I'm looking forward to trying to remove some of those barriers so we can accelerate that kind of housing in Costa Mesa. This weekend, I walked over to Teewinkle Park for the Spring Bark Fest, which was a great event. My dog very much enjoyed it. And it was great to see our canine unit, our police canine unit there, too, doing a demonstration, which was both thrilling and frightening at the same time. You don't want to mess with any of our dogs. I'm glad Councilmember Reynolds mentioned walk and bike to school. I'll be joining students and parents tomorrow morning on the east side on their way to Kaiser and Woodland Elementary Schools. It's always been a great event early in the morning. And then I'd like to follow up on a comment from Mr. Humphries. I appreciate Ms. Farrell Harrison, if we could get a status update on the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And then I'll note that a handful of us will be heading to Las Vegas later this month for the ICSC Conference, which is always a good event for trying to attract businesses to take interest in Costa Mesa. And so I'm also curious, Ms. Farrell Harrison, what's the status of our Economic Development Strategic Plan, since we approved that a while back? And I'm just sort of top of mind what we're planning on doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now it's me. So Earth Day and Arbor Day were great, so thank you to the staff. So Arbor Day was at Teewinkle. We had the, we planted trees. We had a fair amount of people out there. One thing is, we had a lot of people from Ernst &amp; Young, a group of accountants or consultants. And it occurred to me that it would be really good if we promoted those types of connections between the city activities and the private sector, because it's nice to see that big group out there. That was on Friday. Trying to read my own writing here. Oh, yeah, I said microwave on the first floor. Yeah, microwave on the first floor at the senior center. I'm in favor of that. If you're going to the marathon, anybody going to be at the marathon? All right? So listen for my voice. Listen for my voice. I'm going to be starting out the marathon. I'll yell something about Costa Mesa, and then the marathon starts. No, I'm not going to run. No, no. No. Marathon starts in Newport Beach, and it ends in Costa Mesa. So there's a 5K. Okay, that's almost my speed. Okay. So the other thing I did on Friday, I told you I did Arbor Day, but I also went to Cadi Petry Norris's press conference on fentanyl. I was there with our chief, Chief Lawrence, our deputy chief, La Pointe, and we talked about all the issues relating to fentanyl, the legislation that's moving forward, some of the legislations that stalled, including a bill to enhance the punishment of people who market and traffic fentanyl on social media, which was put forth by Assembly Member Cadi Petry Norris, and she's getting some friction in Sacramento. I wanted to read you some statistics and urge you about something. This is right from our police chief's presentation, and I think it's pretty powerful and impactful statistics. So in 2021, Costa Mesa saw 204 fentanyl poisonings in our community. That's an average of 17 a month. Students, I really want you to listen to this. In 2022, Costa Mesa had 171 fentanyl poisonings for an average of 14 a month. Many victims' lives were saved, but Costa Mesa experienced about four fentanyl-related deaths a month over that period of time. Many of the deaths were a result of individuals and drug dealers furnishing counterfeit pills and narcotics containing illicit fentanyl to someone who was not aware of their presence. This is very important. Fentanyl deaths are usually about poisoning, not overdose. There are people that are taking a drug that they don't know is fentanyl, and they die because of the poisoning. Here's what our law, so Chief Lawrence noticed this issue as soon as he came to the city of Costa Mesa in September of 2021, and we're very fortunate to have him. So between 2018 and 2023, the PD has seized 283 pounds of fentanyl and over 522,000 fentanyl lace pills. The PD has also successfully obtained federal indictments against subjects who have been identified as furnishing fentanyl to victims who have died of the poisoning. We participate in the "one pill can kill, one pill can kill" education program at the federal level. And this is what I want to show you, show and tell. This is called Narcan. It comes in a box. Starting two months ago, you can now get this over the counter. This should be, and I'm speaking to city staff, and I'm speaking to everybody out there, you should all have Narcan on hand. Remember, one, I'm just speaking to the students, one pill can kill, and it's poisoning, it's not an overdose. You've got to be very careful about this. So I like to see these in every police car, to the extent they're not, every fire truck, every fire station, every facility, every library, everything in the city, and on the council dais. Okay? Narcan. Now, moving on. That's all I have to say about fentanyl. I didn't say I'd be brief. So Dick Maron was, Kim, I have this whole, it's almost word-for-word what Kim Hendricks wrote, so I'm not going to read it to you again. I'm just going to share my personal experience with Dick, and we're going to adjourn the meeting for Dick Maron and Gordon Bowley. I will read some items about Gordon. So Dick, I knew him because we both went to St. Simon &amp; Jude Church from time to time, and we would sit right next to each other, all the way at the right side of the church. And we'd say hi to each other before and after, and he was a very devout Catholic over at St. Simon &amp; Jude. And I encourage everybody that knew him to go to that funeral and to the event afterwards at Norma Herzog. I know I'll be there. The other thing is, all the stuff that Kim said is true, but he was a very tenacious man. He loved the city very much, and he would stand up to anyone. I remember working with him in the charter when that crazy thing was going forward, and he was opposing the charter. And then when we put forth, people wanted to put sports fields at Fairview Park, and he stood up to them. So he would stand up to anything, anybody for who he believed in. So anyway, may he rest in peace. Now Gordon Bowley. Oh, by the way, Kim didn't read his children, his three children are Elise Prinster, Mark Maron, who she mentioned, Nicole Cruz, and his brother Edward Maron, and he had seven grandchildren. I did pick up on that. She couldn't get through it. She was trying to get through it at the end. So now to Gordon Bowley. Unfortunately, we also lost Gordon Bowley, a longtime Costa Mesa resident who passed away on April 17th at the age of 85. Gordon was born in Winnipeg, Manitoba, Canada, in 1937, and moved to the United States in 1964, purchasing his home in Mesa Verde in 1964. His family still owns that home today. He founded Rainbow Magnetics, a printer of promotional refrigerator magnets, and he was president of Rainbow until he retired in 2000. He was a master of ceremonies at many charity events, always with a quick wit and a Johnny Carson-style sense of humor. If you haven't been called a hockey puck by Gordon Bowley, then you know you're probably not a hockey puck. Gordon was a fixture at the city for decades, especially in the areas of youth and high school sports. He served on both, as both president of Costa Mesa United and the chairman of the Youth Sports Council, and harbor-area baseball coach, and a Jones Cup volunteer. He was instrumental, an instrumental figure in the growth and success of the Mesa Verde Classic Golf Tournament, which I play in every year. It's a great tournament, and it's the largest fundraising event for youth sports in the city of Costa Mesa. He was also actively involved in a number of different community organizations and groups, including the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce, the Hoag Hospital 552 Foundation, the YMCA, St. Andrews Presbyterian Church, where he served as an elder. He is survived by his longtime wife Carol, whom he was married to for 60 years, three children, Cara Jones, Jennifer Knapp, and Frasier Bowley, and six grandchildren, including Jake Knapp, who is currently a professional golfer on the Corn Fairy Tour, and if all goes well, he'll get his PGA card at the end of this year. Memorial services are scheduled for Gordon for May 12 at 2:00 p.m. at St. Andrews Presbyterian Church. And a reception will follow at the Mesa Verde Country Club. So I urge you all to go to that if you're so inclined, and we will be adjourning the meeting for Dick Maron and Gordon Bowley in honor and memory of those two gentlemen who gave so much of their life to the city of Costa Mesa. That's all I have. City Manager Farrell Harrison, you have the floor for your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Councilmembers of the public. Just had a few items for you this evening. First, I wanted to officially announce publicly my appointment of Alma Reyes as deputy city manager, and wanted you to join me in congratulating her. Alma has been a very dedicated member of the team in the city manager's office. Many of the members of the public know and grown to love Alma. She's someone that I trust inherently with many of the very sensitive issues that we have to deal with in public service. She's been extremely dedicated and loyal, really stepped up during the COVID-19 pandemic, in particular as it relates to some of our most vulnerable residents, those that were at most high risk and worked diligently with our public safety teams, but also with Parks and Community Services to make sure that we got the information out along all the different sectors of our community and to our Spanish-speaking community as well. She's been instrumental in our constituent services team in making sure that, you know, we're being responsive and addressing many of the issues that have been raised to us that we need to work closer on with the community. And so Alma, thank you for being such a great employee, a trusted public servant, and someone who takes public service so to heart. So it's just a pleasure to work alongside you, and thank you for your continued service to the city and having such a great breadth and depth of experience in so many different departments in the city. So thank you for accepting the offer. Next, I wanted to just give a couple of updates on some of the issues we've raised on the floor this evening and also in public comment. I'm happy to announce that at our next regular council meeting on May 16, we will have a joint planning commission and city council meeting of one particular topic and just one, and that is our draft Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, or Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Conversation, Discussion, and Analysis. And so more information to come on that, but that will be at our very next regularly scheduled meeting. Next week is a study session that will be on the budget, but at the May 16 meeting, we will bring forward to you with the consultant that did the analysis of different options for housing inclusionary ordinance. We will have that on the 16th. Again, joint planning commission and city council meeting just on that one topic. Next, I wanted to give an update on the Economic Development Strategic Plan. As you know, we did hire a consultant. They were selected. They're currently preparing market studies for the city's youth, and they'll also be developing an outreach strategy for communication for later this summer. And so we'll keep you abreast of that, but that study and that analysis is underway. On Project Food Box, comments from Councilmember Reynolds on that. Great program. Staff will be meeting with Project Food Box next week, and so hopefully we can get the information out to the community as soon as possible on that benefit. We know that there are many families in need, and so we're happy to meet with them and to get that information out. And then, last but not least, Councilmember Harper, you did ask for an update on the Tennis Center RFP, and so I want to turn that over to our Finance Director, Carol Molina, since she's the lead on that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Just to provide you an update where we're at today, we have selected three tennis center operators to move forward. We are in the process this week coordinating, scheduling that with the city evaluators and those three operators. The back-and-forth questionnaire took some time from staff. The financials that were provided for documentation as part of the RFP process was brought to staff in different types of formats, so it took a little bit longer for staff to review the financials in a way that would be apples-to-apples and fair to those solicitors. So this week, we are anticipating to finalize that scheduling to move forward with the interview process for those tennis center operators. With that, if you have any questions, I can go ahead and answer.
Okay. Anything else? Are you good? Lori, I mean, you're good? You're done? Okay, good. So now we'll go to our acting city attorney, Tarquin Preziosi. Mr. Preziosi, do you have any city attorney report?
No city attorney report this evening.
All right. That's brief. That's brief. That's excellent. Okay. Makes up for me. Okay. Now we're going to go to the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are routine and will be considered in one motion unless they're pulled by either a council member, a member of the public, or a member of the staff. Madam Clerk, has anything been pulled?
I have not received any requests, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Good. We'll just leave it at that. I have to recuse myself from number three because of campaign contributions from one of the recipients, and so Councilmember Gamaros has to do the same thing for number three because of priceless pets. Other than that, somebody can make a motion. Motion by Councilmember Marr, seconded by Chavez. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries, seven zero.
All right. Let's do our public hearing item. So let's do the public hearing item, and then we'll take a break before we get to the two old business items, if that's okay. So Madam Clerk, would you please read the title on the public hearing item?
Yes, this is the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan: Identifying Funding Priorities for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Grant Home Programs. Presentation by Ms. Daly, Grant Administrator.
Ms. Daly, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. The item before you this evening is a request to approve the 2324 Annual Action Plan and authorize its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Additionally, staff is requesting your direction regarding potential changes, as described in the staff report, to the TBRA and Single Family Rehabilitation Grant and Loan Programs. So the city of Costa Mesa receives approximately $1.5 million from two HUD grants each year: the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Grant. The use of these grants is limited according to federal regulations. CDBG can be used for a variety of activities. However, all activities must meet one of the three national objectives, as indicated on the screen: an elimination of rundown areas to meet an urgent need or to benefit low- and moderate-income persons. Costa Mesa uses its funds exclusively to benefit low- and moderate-income residents. Home can be used for the preservation and increasing housing opportunities for low-income residents, and the city accomplishes that through its home-funded programs. The city's consolidated plan is a five-year strategic plan that identifies and prioritizes housing and community needs for the city and is a requirement for the city to receive CDBG and home funds. This year's annual action plan is the fourth year of the five-year consolidated plan. The annual action plan links the goals identified in the consolidated plan to the planned annual expenditure of CDBG and home funds. Both the consolidated plan and the action plan and any substantial amendments to these plans require a 30-day public comment period and a public hearing. The annual action plan is due to HUD each year on May 16th, which is 45 days prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year, which starts on July 1st. The priority needs and goals, as listed in the consolidated plan, include housing preservation, infrastructure and facility improvements, homeless continuum of care, public social services, and program administration. The projects and activities in the annual action plan are used to meet these goals. The city will receive a total of $1.52 million in CDBG and home funds from HUD for fiscal year 2324 that starts on July 1st. Also available is unspent funds from prior years for reprogramming. So as listed here, the total funding received for CDBG would be $1,689,303, and home funds would be a total of $549,260. CDBG activities to be funded include public service grants, capital projects, code enforcement, housing rehabilitation administration, and program administration. Public service grants have a maximum allocation of 15% of the city's total CDBG annual allocation. Capital projects include public facility and infrastructure improvements, and staff is recommending $925,627 to purchase a new fire engine with the required outfitting to serve the city. CDBG-funded code enforcement takes place in CDBG areas where 51% or more of the residents are low to moderate income, and code enforcement activity can be connected to rehabilitation or improvement of housing in those CDBG areas. Housing Rehabilitation Program Administration funds staff and other direct costs associated with the administering of the city's home-funded housing rehabilitation program. The maximum allocation for administration and planning is 20% of the city's total CDBG annual allocation, and this includes funding for fair housing services, which is required, a requirement by HUD. So the CDBG public service grants, funds are available for public service grants, and they're capped at 15%. So the total available this year was $151,575. The city released a request for proposals in January and received 12 proposals from 11 nonprofits totaling $264,000. The grant amounts are a minimum of $15,000 and a maximum of $30,000 per organization to ensure the grants are impactful while serving diverse eligible populations. The Housing and Public Services Grants Committee met on March 15th and heard a brief presentation from each nonprofit organization and evaluated and scored the proposals. Based on the amount of funding available, the committee developed their public service grant recommendations for the city council. These recommendations have been incorporated into the draft action plan and the proposed CDBG budget. This slide shows the total public service funding, including $30,000 allocated to the city's senior center community outreach worker and $121,575 allocated to seven nonprofit organizations to provide public services to low-income residents in the city. If you refer to Attachment 2 of the Agenda Report, it provides information regarding the committee's recommendations and ratings and more detail about the selected nonprofit organizations. This slide here shows a summary of the ratings and grant recommendations. The committee recommended funding for seven out of the 11 nonprofit applications received and suggested that fair housing be funded with administrative funds. It's important to note that more than just rating of the organization was taken into consideration when deciding on funding. The committee was made aware of other possible funding sources and did their best to spread the funding across all of the organizations that applied. Tonight, a member of the committee, Michael To, is here, and he would be available for any comments about the process that the committee did. Home funds available for fiscal year 2324 include $40,000 in program income, and that added to the total allocation for the years, $549,260. The home program is designed to support housing affordability for low-income households through its programs. Home activities to be funded include Housing Rehabilitation Loans and Grants Program, Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, also called TBRA, Affordable Housing Development through a community housing development organization, also called a CHODO, and that's money that is set aside, and also program administration. An RFP was released this year to continue the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, and the current administrator, Families Forward, was chosen to continue administering the program for families with minor children. HUD requires a 15% set aside for nonprofit housing development by a CHODO organization. We don't currently have a CHODO project. And if and when a project is identified and a developer is selected, it would come back to city council for review. Most recently, CHODO funds were used to assist the Motel 6 Affordable Housing Project. Lastly, the maximum allowable administrative allocation for home administration is 10% of the total annual allocation. So these are the staff recommendations. To hold a public hearing, which we are doing right now, approve the recommended allocation for the fiscal year 2324 CDBG and home funds, adopt a resolution to approve the 2324 Action Plan, and authorize the city manager or her designee to submit the plan to HUD and execute all required agreements and certifications. Additionally, staff is requesting that city council consider providing direction regarding the potential future modifications to the TBRA and Housing Rehab Grant Loan Programs, as outlined in the staff report. If council directs staff to evaluate the TBRA and Single Family Rehab Program for modifications and home or CDBG funds are identified to accomplish the program modifications, a substantial amendment to the consolidated plan and action plan may be required. And that would include a 30-day comment period and a public hearing after the current action plan, the plan that you have in front of you tonight, is approved. That concludes my comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions of Ms. Daly? Councilmember Marr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if I look at Attachment 2 under the Public Service Grant Application Summaries, I'm looking at Mercy House was requested $25,000. Committee recommended $15,000. But I'm not seeing that amount in any of the other attachments. Did something change with the Mercy House award?
No, there isn't a recommendation for Mercy House. That must have been an error on the attachment.
So the committee recommended giving $0 to Mercy House?
Yes.
Even though they ranked first out of the 11 applications?
Yes.
Do we know why?
Yes. It's because other funding was considered during the meeting with the committee. So the city provides a lot of funds, other funds, CDBG, CV funds, ARPA funds, also Housing Authority funds and general funds towards homeless services and the homeless shelter. And these funds, in particular, were for security at the shelter, which is, I would say, 90% funded already by the city.
Okay.
And so, thank you.
And then, under the H and P S G Committee Recommendation, Slide 8, $30,000 for the case manager at the community senior center. But then I think that's later lumped into the administration funds. Why is that considered administration and not a grant? I guess it's not granting it to a nonprofit. But nevertheless, a new case manager isn't necessarily administration, is it?
No, it shouldn't be an administration. Where are you saying that?
Oh, you're right. My not a, I'm sorry, I'm misreading my not a grant comment. Yeah, that was the opposite. Is that, so that's 30,000, so it's 121 for the nonprofit groups, but we get to 151 by adding the $30,000 in for the case manager. So even though we're held to a maximum of 15% allocation, I don't know, it just seemed weird that the case manager was lumped in there.
So the case manager, the funding for the case manager is a public service. And with our public service funds, we are able to fund either city programs or nonprofit organizations. It's whichever organization has the capacity to provide the services that we need. And we have a case manager that provides those services that we need. And they are partially funded with CDBG funds.
Okay. And sorry, I guess where I was, I'm following the mayor's lead. I can't read my own handwriting on this right now. But where I was going with that, is that $30,000 that might have otherwise gone to a nonprofit, but we're using it for the case manager instead?
If it wasn't allocated to the case manager, then it would have been available to the nonprofits, yes.
Okay. I think I had one more. No, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope. I wasn't done. I'm sorry. I'm a mess. I have notes all over the place tonight. I don't have my notebook. Okay. So my other question was on TBRA. The change in rules that you're proposing, one of the things we've heard from the community repeatedly is that many of the folks who wish to partake of the rental funds are sub-tenants. And so under at least Families Forward, I believe they don't currently qualify because they're, they don't, they might have a lease, but it's less formal than a lease with a tenant or with an owner. Is, as we change the funding for the TBRA, does that change any of the rulemaking that we have the ability to engage in?
The funding for the TBRA that was brought to our attention that's mentioned in the potential program modifications has to do with mobile homeowners because they own their mobile home, but they're also a tenant because they pay space rent.
Mm-hmm.
And that is like something outside of the program as it stands. But what you're talking about, TBRA, is through the home program. And federally funded programs have more restrictive requirements. And part of the reason for that is because they are required to provide fair housing, make sure that fair housing is, rules and regulations are followed. And also that there isn't any, there are a lot of protections for tenants with the home program. Like a housing quality inspection is required. There has to be a lease between the tenant and the landlord, and also the landlord and the administrator of the TBRA program. So that's why it's more of a formal program. And those are written to the regulations. You can't alter the program unless you change the funding source.
Okay. Thank you. Now I'm done for real this time. Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds?
There's always room for one more question. Okay. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions. Can we jump to Slide 6, please? I think this is the one that showed the proposed breakdown for CDBG. And I had maybe a definition question first. So I understand, you know, all of these funds are intended to support what we call low- and moderate-income residents and families. But some of these are, you know, not directly related to serving individuals, right? They're related to serving a population. So how do we define CDBG-eligible areas? And what are those and what are the definitions?
So CDBG-eligible areas, in the attachment, the annual action plan, there is a map in there, and the areas are highlighted. I think they're in green. They're anywhere where there is a population of low- to moderate-income residents of 50% or more, or 51% or more. So any section of the city has 51% or more, and they're like census groups.
So where the majority of residents would qualify?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's helpful to know. And so the proposed breakdown has $925,000 out of about $1.6 million. So it's about half towards the purchase of a fire engine? Have we done this before? And how do we demonstrate sort of that nexus of service? It's just because that engine would serve a population that's majority-low income?
Yes. So it's eligible because it's under capital improvements, because of the population that they serve, the people who are, you know, in need. And also, if you were, I mean, if you really wanted to take the city as a whole, it is more than 51% low- to moderate-income, and they serve the whole city. Is that what you're asking?
Okay. So you're suggesting that since the city is 51%, anything that serves the city qualifies?
If you had to do it by an area, the city would qualify. But in the regulations, the fire equipment and fire facilities are an eligible expense.
Okay. And then the, I know that code enforcement is something that we've always had as part of this program. So we have $360,000 towards code enforcement. I'm never clear. Are these incremental officers supporting the, code enforcement officers supporting these areas? Or are we using CDBG funds to sort of supplant funding that we would normally provide for code enforcement in these areas?
Supplantation isn't allowed with CDBG funds, and it's two and a half code enforcement officers, and they are specifically designated to the CDBG-eligible areas.
Okay. So we have other code enforcement officers also serving these areas that are funded in our normal funds?
Yeah, they serve the other areas, the non-CDBG-funded areas.
Just to clarify, these aren't new code enforcement officers. These are existing code enforcement officers.
Correct.
So if we didn't have, I guess, what I hear you saying is through other funding, we're providing code enforcement officers for other areas of the city. We're using these funds to provide code enforcement officers for the CDBG-eligible areas of the city. Okay. So if we weren't using CDBG funds for this, we would have to fund, we would either have to fund separately code enforcement officers for the eligible areas or not have code enforcement officers, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it's a service that we would provide otherwise, but we're using these funds to provide it?
We're using CDBG funds to provide these services in CDBG-eligible areas. So either the service would not exist or the city would have to decide to try to find some other funding to fund those services.
Right. As we do for other areas of the city.
We fund code enforcement officers to work on citywide issues, but these officers are specifically designated to only CDBG areas as a special program.
Okay. And then, so looking at the list here and comparing it with our And then, so looking at the list here and comparing it with our goals, our, our number one goal is related to housing. I forget the words exactly, housing production, I think, or housing preservation. So which of these items connects to housing preservation and, and how?
So code enforcement connects to housing preservation because in the CDBG eligible areas, they connect the residents with the housing rehab program. Housing rehabilitation program administration pays for the administration of the rehabilitation program, which is home-funded. So not all of them would be just housing preservation. Need to...
Yeah, those are the two main programs that inform that goal. The housing rehabilitation program, as well as our community improvement programs through code enforcement.
Okay. Okay. I'm seeing that as a smaller percentage, I think, directly connected to housing. Can we move to the home program and the TBRA? I had a few questions related to that. We have $150,000 allocated for the pilot program. Does that include the administration by Families Forward?
Yes.
Okay. And is that 10% or 15%? Do you know?
I believe it's 10%.
Okay. Do we, do we have an estimate of how many households or families are served by $150,000?
Right now, I would say, right now, roughly half that amount, half that amount covers what they've already helped, which was, I believe, eight households.
Okay. So we've, we've helped eight. We think we can help another eight with the 150K allocation? Okay. Do we have any sense of what fraction that is of the housing need for qualifying households in Costa Mesa? I'm guessing it's small, but I'm curious if we have any data or estimates of, you know, how much of the, the, the challenge we're able to support with $150,000?
Yeah, I can start that answer. And then, Mikel, please jump in if you have additional information. So I don't think we have a percentage or specific data in terms of the need for a program like this. Essentially, our, our services are informed by the number of applications that we receive. And even if an application doesn't exactly match up with this funding program, we try to connect it with other funding programs that are available throughout the city. Some of our rental assistance programs, for example, if applicants don't fall exactly within these program requirements. But in general, we don't have a good data set to show us in totality citywide need.
How would we, if we wanted to understand what the need is for the renters in Costa Mesa, how would we go about that? Do, do we have access to data or would we need to collect new data?
We might need to collect new data. We do have access to data, but it's, it, it's based on census data, which isn't necessarily current. We did do a little survey to try to determine whether or not the tenant-based rental assistance pilot program should continue on to a regular program. We've received very few survey responses, but we, I did find out, so a total of 42 responses, 33 in English, 19 in Spanish. There were 26, so it asked whether or not they were even eligible, income-eligible. 26 of the 42 were income, claimed to be income-eligible. And 12 of them were families with children. And so, that, the other thing we were looking for is we hear a lot of need for elderly residents or residents who don't have children in the home needing rental assistance. And we want to make sure to meet that need. If not with the TBRA, then with one of our other rental assistance programs. And so, this survey identified that there are definitely people out there that are income-qualified. And they are both individual and families.
But we're not able to sort of extrapolate that to estimate what would be the citywide need if we wanted to really support our renter community in the coming years?
But I, I'm not sure at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could make some projections. But at the end of the day, I think if you're looking for a specific data set that's based on quantifiable information, we don't have that available, other than census data, which does tend to be old.
Yeah. How did we pick 150K? I'm just curious.
And initially, the pilot program started, I believe it started with 75,000, and then council approved 150,000. And then, another 150 was added on. And we have not been able to go through 300,000 in the period of time that we had the pilot program going. So we settled on 150,000 because we think that that's a realistic amount for a one-year period of time.
That would get used. Okay. Okay. And then, lastly, on the question of eligibility for mobile homes, if we, so I, I'll just share. I had raised this question because I was surprised when I learned that the program was not eligible for mobile home residents. I, this came up in a mobile home advisory, advisory committee meeting. And it was a surprise to me. I think it was a surprise to everyone because we had been sharing those resources. And we realized and understand why, why that eligibility sort of barrier is there. If we wanted to open that program for mobile home residents, what would be the, the process? Can you just walk through that process again?
If we wanted to open up the TBRA program?
Or, or other support? Yeah. What would we need to do?
So if it, if we decided to open up a program that involves home or CDBG funds, then there would have to be an amendment to the consolidated plan and also the annual action plan. If we are able to use other funding sources, it's possible that something like that would not be necessary. And we could move forward with making a modification and putting it in front of council.
Okay. Do we have any other funding buckets available for rental support this year or support for mobile home residents?
Yeah, Councilmember, we, I defer to Carol on this, but we could definitely look into the use of the remaining ARPA funds to see if that, I mean, it sounds like that could be a viable bucket perhaps.
That would definitely qualify for ARPA funds. It's definitely something we should consider.
Okay. And remind me how much we have there?
We have about $7 million. It's uncommitted at this time.
Okay. That's not a small bucket. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Do any other council members have questions? Yes. Councilmember Harper?
Yeah, this is, good presentation. This is for me and the high school students. It's educational. So if you could, if you could walk through on page 11, I think you're already there. Just give me a, a single-family housing rehabilitation. What's that mean? How do I get those funds? And then walk through each of those just real briefly for us.
So the single-family housing rehabilitation program, the total, that total funding listed there is for approximately 10 households in a year. Currently, most of the applications that we get, so it's both a loan and a grant program. You can get either a grant or a loan.
So how do I, how do I get that?
So you fill out an application with the city. The information's on the city website. It's also available at the counter. If somebody wants to come to the planning counter and pick up an application.
So I have an income level, I have a housing remodel I want to do, and I get some funding? Might be a loan, might be a grant?
Exactly. It depends on what you're needing.
And, and, and most people know about this through, I guess we do community outreach, our website, whatever.
It's a website through code enforcement.
They're all leaving now. They're taking off. Good for you guys. And then the tenant-based rental assistance, I'm just, I just want to brief when that's all I want to get. Tenant-based, that low income too, and certain level of income, and you get some money. And then affordable housing, just a different name for a program, same, same concept.
So affordable housing is like what we did with the Motel 6, the Motel 6 conversion. That would be considered affordable housing. And this amount, HUD requires that we set aside a certain amount every year for a possible project.
Projects like that. And then administration just goes back to the general fund to operate these programs to, goes into the city?
That's, yeah, that's for staff oversight of the program.
And that's the same thing on, I think that's page 6. There's 200,000, that's administration, same thing. Goes towards that.
Yes. Not general fund, but to fund staff services to run these programs. Yes.
I didn't say it, said it the wrong way.
Also consultants, if we need a consultant to do any of the administrative work.
Thanks for that. I appreciate it. That's all I got.
Anyone else? Yes. Councilmember Gamaros, you have the floor.
So I just have a couple of quick questions. This is kind of some nerdy stuff. This might be more for the chief than you. But I just, wondering if I could ask you a few questions real quick, chief? So on page 6 here, line item 2, under Capital Projects, it says we're purchasing a truck here. I see it's going to be a triple combination pumper fire engine. Is that correct? Is, is this a $9 million vehicle? Is this all of that going towards that?
Yeah.
900,000, sorry, not 9 million.
Yeah. Councilmember Gamaros, no, that's a portion of it. So the, it's, it's a fire engine, triple combination pumper. And so, it's a, it's a portion of that. Our engine's now, actually, it cost about 1.5 million.
And this is going to replace an existing?
Yeah. This, this particular fire engine is going to replace the engine that is currently housed at Fire Station Number 3.
Okay. And where does that, where does that one go? Does it go to a, do we sell it or what do we do with it?
Generally, the lifespan for our fire engines are 15 years, frontline service. Then we move to five years reserve service, depending on, on the temperature of how it's been maintained over the course of its life. So this one will transition into a reserve status as we, the Fire Station 3, Engine 83, that'll transition into reserve status, and then this will be frontline engine for us.
Okay. That was it? Just wondering what we're doing exactly specifically. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay. While, while we're on that, I just want to bring up, because it was, I think it was in response to a question of Councilmember Reynolds, that it does say in the staff report, and I think I heard the chief just say it, that this fire station is specifically going to be at Fire Station 3, which is one of our, what do we say? One of the greatest socio-economic diversity parts. So a CB, CDBG area, right? I always want to say CB, CBGB or the, what's the, the punk rock place? CBGB? No, it's like, no, it's the place that they used to have all the punk rock. And, yeah. Anyway, I don't know what's going on there. So, so just a couple of questions. On page, I think it's, if you go to your slides, I think it's page 8, 8 maybe? 8, okay. Yeah, got it. So the, the $30,000 for the case manager at the, at the Community Senior Center, what specifically does that case manager do at the community center?
So that case manager connects the seniors with all the different programs that they're eligible for, supports them in their mental, physical well-being, works together with the, the Meals, Meals on Wheels program, the senior, community senior program that's also available at the senior center. They have the lunch cafe and the Meals on Wheels program. So that case manager is just really integrated into helping people who are CDBG eligible.
Yeah. Sounds like important work. So are there any other buckets that we can use to, to fund that case manager? Ms. Molina?
So for the case manager, I'd have to talk to staff, but we could probably talk about funding potentially ARPA money, depending on some of the details of those services, knowing that that ARPA money has to be committed and spent within a certain time. So it would be time limited for the use of ARPA.
Okay. And the, obviously, if it's not transparent enough, the reason I'm asking is, I'm trying to free up some additional money that we can provide to some of these other grant applicants that didn't receive their, their full request.
In that case, Mayor Stevens, I would recommend considering using the ARPA funds for some of these other projects. It's a lot cleaner for ARPA.
Thank you for that. And so then, the other thing too is, I think it was Councilmember Mar that pointed out that, that in our staff report, it had Mercy House getting 15 grand. But then, we, because of the reasons you explained, they're not getting their 15 grand. So I, I didn't reconcile the, what's in, in your, you did? And, and what happened to the 15 grand? It's not in, what is that? Okay. So it's not like we have another 15 grand? Okay. I was just hoping. Okay. That's all my questions. Let's open, let's open it up to the public. Public wishes to speak on this item. You get three minutes. You can only speak to this item. You're going to hear a little ding when you got a minute left. Then you have to wrap it up.
All right.
Yes, from the, the office of Assemblymember Cadi Petri Norris.
In a different role this evening.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here in my capacity as a member of the Housing and Public Service Grant Committee. Just on behalf of my fellow committee members, just briefly to say, you know, thank you to all, well, thank you first and foremost to the staff for the work they've done in preparing us for our previous meeting where we came up with our recommendations. Thank you to the applicants for their very informative presentations. I think for a lot of people, it really gave some of us, some of us that know them, but also others, a good window into the work that they do on behalf of Costa Mesa residents, as well as residents in other communities as well. So a lot of thoughtful decision-making went into the recommendations you have before you with, of course, the limited funding that we have to work with. The advantage we had this year was we knew how much we had to work with versus how much we would have to estimate receiving after decisions were made and having to make changes. So we knew what we were receiving, what we would have to allocate. So that was very helpful. Nonetheless, it was very, obviously, challenging to make a decision with all of these noteworthy applications and the good work that everybody was attempting to do to serve these three key populations, the homeless, seniors, and youth. And so, before you, some of the factors that we considered in our decision-making, of course, one was the limited amount of money we had to work with, the demand for those dollars from the applicants. And also, under consideration is current grants that they would be receiving from other sources of funding or would be eligible for potentially other sources of funding, like the home ARP funds, CDBG COVID dollars, or perhaps even ARPA dollars. So that went into some of our decision-making. The population served, the number of people served under the proposal if they were to receive the full amount or a portion thereof. And then just looking at the equitable distribution to those different three key categories. So that went into our decision-making process. But we're really grateful for the wonderful organizations that we have in our community, serving our community and the proposals they put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Nice to see everyone. Well, congratulations to Costa Mesa for the cover of the West Ways Magazine. I feel very proud about that. And thank you for mentioning Gordon Bulley. He was a dear volunteer when I was at the Chal Martín Center as well. But I am speaking to this particular item, and I'm asking to, you to reconsider the funding allocation for Love Costa Mesa's Laborers of Love Project. I do want to say that I served on the subcommittee that decided on CDBG funds for years. And I know how frustrating it is to get to this point and have things reallocated. So I just do want to say that upfront and thank the work of the committee for what they put into this. But now, I am standing on the side of a volunteer. I am a volunteer with Love Costa Mesa, in particular, this initiative. And I just want to say that the Love, Laborers of Love, which is that once a month, people are volunteers, we're mobilizing volunteers to serve a particular home project every month. And it's one of those situations where because of the success, the success of the program, we've been able to help many people and mobilize a lot of volunteers. Now, you know, we're looking to increase our funding. And a lot of that has been because of our partnership with the senior center, with code enforcement. And we've worked closely with them to identify the neighbors that are in need of having their housing preserved. We have two particular projects where houses were on the verge of being repossessed, but because we were able to go in and do projects, the residents were able to stay in their home. And so, just to, I think this particular project meets a lot of the goals of the CBDG funds in terms of housing preservation that we've talked about, working with seniors. funds in terms of housing preservation that we've talked about, working with seniors. We do do several projects in the mobile home parks, as has also been discussed this evening. And so if you're not able to reallocate those fundings, that funding tonight, I just had some, I know you guys have been talking about what different buckets we can take from, so just a suggestion would be perhaps taking some budget, allocating some budget for code enforcement, because this is part of single-family housing, maybe some of the rehab money there. We could use some connection with perhaps City Yards, so we're not spending so much funding on supplies and able to get supplies from this, what the City Yard has, our sanitation district. So we're really only looking for an additional $12,000 to be able to fund a staff person to coordinate the program, which is really what we need to do. We're also working to raise some of that money from our partner churches, but a lot of the demand is coming through our partnership with the senior center and code enforcement, so wanted to just bring that to your attention again tonight. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens and council members. I'm Michelle Silva with Families Forward. First, I want to thank you for your partnership and support in our service to Costa Mesa families. Thank you for giving a shout out to the Bungalows Project. I will share, I was there, out there this morning, and was happy, happy to report that there are three families that have moved in and are loving their new home. Tonight before you is a funding recommendation that will support some critical supportive services for those families, to help them eventually move on from affordable housing and regain long-term, long-term stability. And Councilmember Reynolds, I did want to share, I do have some older data, but I do have some data that might be informative for you, but this is from 2021, but it was the percentage of Brit, Briton families in Costa Mesa was 31% at that point, if that's helpful. So thank you for your consideration tonight, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Ms. Cot Hill, you have the floor.
Cool. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here, and anyway, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Raina, and I'm the Neighbor Initiative Director for Love Costa Mesa, and I actually have the huge, huge honor of running our Laborers of Love program, which was talked about today in the CBDG presentation. And thank you so much for Christine, for advocating for more funding. The work that we do is extremely important. We partner with code enforcement and our senior center to identify extremely vulnerable populations in our city, especially our senior neighbors. We have helped disabled neighbors, we have helped veterans, and so I'm here just to share with the community about this program. So if you know of anybody who is in need, we provide a free manual labor project, once a month, every first Saturday, for a neighbor in need, and during that time, we mobilize volunteers from all over the community. So under the Neighbor Initiative, we also have the honor of planning Love Costa Mesa Day, which is coming up on May 20th, so hopefully you guys are all going to be there. And on that day, we have thousands of volunteers that come out to volunteer. And so because of those efforts throughout the years, that is how Laborers of Love was birthed. But you can see, I'm only one person trying to do all that work and planning and organizing, and so that is the reason I'm here, to basically plead for more funding, so that we can increase the capacity of Love Costa Mesa and our Neighbor Initiative, and also to meet more needs. I am getting more calls and emails and requests for projects in a time, in a manner that I'm not able to help, because I myself don't have the capacity to meet all these needs. And there's a lot of complications in running a project like Laborers of Love. There's a lot of skilled labors that is involved with landscaping, painting, there's plumbing, roofing, there's a lot of different things. And so anyways, I hope that you would reconsider. I know that, like Christine mentioned, there is a lot of difficulty in reallocating funding, but there are any other source of funding that the city can think of. I do believe in this program, and I believe that the money is absolutely worth investing in this program. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here as well with Laborers of Love, and I'd just like to copy the sentiment that they said there, that, you know, any, any way that we can reallocate some funds or find some more resources to help out Laborers of Love and Trellis, we'd really appreciate that, and, you know, they've already spoken to that. So I'm just going to let everyone know that this Saturday, nine o'clock to noon, we'll be helping a senior in need here in Costa Mesa with landscape work, different types of lifting and moving trash away from their house, and just helping them do the things that they can't do, and that's what those funds go towards, as well as May 20th being the Laborers of Love and Costa Mesa Day, which there'll be events like that all throughout the city. So if you guys could just do your best, I know you guys always do, but just really think about these types of things, and, and we do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll, we'll close public comment, and so I, I'm prepared to make a motion, we could talk about it if we get a second. I, I'm prepared to move on the staff recommendations, except what I'd like to do to supplement that is to add that the following groups would get their, their ask from ARPA money. Laborers of Love, Meals on Wheels, Families Forward, and Project Hope Alliance, that we would supplement the CDBG with ARPA money.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Marr. So anyway, just to, great job, staff. Ms. Daly, thanks for excellent presentation. Thank you for everybody who came out, so many people that do such great work. I'm a big believer in these four organizations, and actually, all the organizations that are getting money, and so I spent, Labor, Laborers of Love too is a, a real force multiplier for code enforcement officers and that department in the city. So anyway, that's the reason I'm moving to supplement the awards. Other than that, I'm perfectly fine with everything in the staff report and the recommendation, and I thank you very much for your work. Anything for the second?
No, that's false add, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes, Mayor, would you consider adding to your motion, direction to staff to identify opportunities to support mobile home residents through rental assistance?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll consider it. Is there any, anything from the staff? Any staff okay with that?
Yes, we're okay with the direction from council. Essentially, what we would do next, if the council approves this, is evaluate possible funding sources, and then bring that back to council, either in a formal capacity or as an update.
Okay, I'll accept that as an amendment, second?
Concur.
Second, accept.
Thank you.
That's good. Anything else? Okay, let's call for the question.
Mayor, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I did already.
Okay, there we go. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, excellent, let's take a break. We'll be back at, let's get back at 8:30.
All right, welcome back. We're back on the record. We have two old business items. The first one is old business item number one, coincidentally, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Yes, Award of Street Sweeping Services and Presentation by Mr. Ryan, Maintenance Services Manager.
Mr. Ryan, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stevens, Mayor Pretum Harland, and City Council. The next item before you for consideration is the Award of the Street Maintenance Services Contract for Citywide Street Sweeping to Sweeping Corps of America for an initial two-year period, and three-year, one, three-one-year renewal periods for not to exceed the annual amount of $1,467,791. The City of Costa Mesa is responsible for the maintenance and regular sweeping of 977 streets, which includes over 850 miles of residential, commercial, and arterial roadway lanes. I did a little map search, and that's pretty close to the distance between here and Eugene, Oregon, which I thought was pretty amazing. Our sweeping services remove over 1,500 tons of debris annually. Ninety to 95% of that material collected is utilized for composting. Street sweeping services are currently contracted through Clean Streets. They're now operating under Sweeping Corps of America, or SCA. The contract began in 2015, and with all approved extensions, was scheduled to end in February of 2023. The City Council did approve a final four-month extension in February of 2023. Now, the amount of that final year of the contract was $747,000 for that 12-month period. As this was the end of the contract, services were put out for rebid. A little background, in October of 2021, the State of California Department of Industrial Relations determined that street sweeping services constituted a public work, which now makes this subject service to prevailing wage requirement. The Purchasing Division advertised a request for proposal for street sweeping services. The new request for proposal did include language identifying the new determination from the DIR. The city received proposals from Sweeping Corps of America and Guardian Street Sweeping. Guardian Street Sweeping did not provide the appropriate documentation establishing that they met all the minimum requirements as outlined in the RFP. Therefore, their proposal was considered non-responsive. Sweeping Corps of America did meet all the requirements contained in the solicitation and has been providing sweep, street sweeping services as Clean Streets for the past seven years for the city. The new contract, as mentioned, has an annual price of approximately $1.47 million. That's almost twice the previous annual contract amount. Staff is currently analyzing options for street sweeping services, including in-sourcing. In-sourcing would require additional staff, as well as a procurement of street sweeping equipment, which would take some time. Staff will be working on a detailed analysis of various options to determine recommendations for next steps. In the meantime, staff does recommend awarding the Maintenance Services Agreement for Street Sweeping Services to Sweeping Corps of America. That concludes my presentations. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any questions of staff? Councilmember Harper?
Yes. Hi, Mr. Ryan. You said the, the increase is 97%, I guess, in your report. Can you tell us why? Is it the prevailing wage? But go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. Yes, our estimation is the majority of that is prevailing wage. I'm sure there's some increases, the cost of doing business, just general businesses of gas and materials, but the majority of that seems to make sense to be the prevailing wage requirement.
What percentage do you think is prevailing wage?
I hesitate to make a guess. This comes from the contractor. I do know anecdotally they're paying previously about $20 per hour to their operators. The new requirements are probably with benefits around $80 an hour.
Oh, so that's, that's something I can understand. So, non-pervailing wage, hourly wage for a street sweeper might be what?
Anecdotally, 20, 18 to maybe 25.
$25. Prevailing wage would be?
With benefits, approximately $80 an hour, with benefits.
Wow, okay. And the other bid that we got, they didn't meet the qualifications. Where do they come in on price? Can you speak to that?
Yes, they're about twice as much.
They're about twice as much?
Yes.
Well, there you go. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harper. Oh, okay, Councilmember Camaros.
So, on this new bid that was awarded, is this street sweeper company attached to a local union?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, this is just a man-paw organization that's going to pay wages to someone? Do you know?
To the best of my knowledge, they're one of the larger companies around. So, I don't know if it's, I would consider them man-paw. They're one of the largest sweeping companies in California right now, to my understanding.
Okay, so then they have a division that offers wages, livable wages, not just in Costa Mesa, but other cities as well, correct?
It's a state of California requirement, so they would have to.
Oh, this is a state requirement?
Correct.
So, this really has nothing to do with something that we may have voted on in this city prior, anything like that, right?
No, this is a determination by the Department of Industrial Relations in 2021, a state determination.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, Mr. Ryan, that was easy. You're off the hook. Let's open it up to public comment. I don't see any movement. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Chavez. What's your motion?
Move stat recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Any comment on that, Councilmember?
We need street swept, so, thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Councilmember Mar, none? Any other council members wish to be heard? No, let's call for the question.
Councilmember Chavez, please. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're moving on to our last item, which is old business item number two. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Thank you. Consideration of Model Flying Activity at Fairview Park. Presentation by Mr. Minter, Parks and Community Services Director, and Mr. Dalton, Fairview Park Administrator.
Gentlemen, you have the floor.
At this time, we do not have a presentation for each night?
Okay. Then, in that case, does anybody have any questions? All right, so I'll open up to public comment. Okay, regarding public comment, by the way, this matter just was continued from the March 2021 meeting. Regarding public comment, we've heard a lot of public comments. Everybody's going to get their three minutes, whether you're here or on Zoom. If you've made the comment before, trust that we've heard it. But, you know, you're welcome to reiterate, but just trust that we've heard and considered your comment. Yes, sir?
Again, Larry Quarter again. I'm curious, in the wording, it refers to a temporary suspension. I'm curious why that's considered temporary, but we can go on. I'd invite you to, I'm getting back in this kind of late. I've been involved in Fairview Park since it was first purchased for use in Costa Mesa. I'd like you to go to fairviewparkadvocates.com, and maybe you'll learn more about me again. With model flying at Fairview Park, I would just say be very, very careful. Please be very, very careful. From a personal standpoint, we have two commercial pilots in our family. So, I have a great deal of respect for most pilots. They deserve a lot of credit. I have described the Fairview Park issues with them. They feel strongly about protection of our small area of environmental protection responsibility here in Costa Mesa, very strongly. Now, during my last, one of my last steering committee meetings that I attended as a member, we had the group put on a presentation, and it got pretty testy in the way they voiced their opinions. So, after the meeting, I volunteered to the gentleman who kind of heads up the group. I said, "I could step out of my position as a member of this committee, and I'd like to spend some time with you if we could, and maybe you can share more of what your needs and feelings are, and I can help at, you know, be an advocate in some way to maybe understand more, to make better decisions." And I basically got thumbing the nose at me and kind of just looking like, "I don't even want to talk to you," and he left. I don't see anybody there trying to really totally understand the value of Fairview Park, the preserve, and having, in my, in my feelings, them trounce on what our responsibility here is, to protect that park and everything that is environmentally sensitive within there. So, just please be very, very, very careful. I would like to be as helpful as possible, since I haven't been involved in this for a while. And Mayor John, you, we met before about this. I'd, I'd be happy to answer your questions or be helpful wherever I can as a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Council. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. We all make decisions every day that have unforeseen consequences. And generally speaking, when we see that we've had, made a decision that has a unforeseen consequence that is negative or is problematic, we fix that, and we fix it at that time, irrespective of the fact that we allowed it in the prior decision. You're at that same point right now. The data has been pretty clear, and I'm a little befuddled by why it taking so long to get to the decision, but that's just the way it is. What we do have is, we have clearly a jewel in the City of Costa Mesa that has unique circumstances that you should be the steward of protecting for my great-grandchildren, as well as your great-grandchildren. And we can do that or not do it as we see fit. The unforeseen consequences will still happen unless we fix them. And you have the ability to do that, and I wish you would. I certainly believe that the proper action, even though these are nice people in HSS, even though they have a hobby, even though the city has allowed them in the past to do that, keep in mind that at one time, people lived on that bluff. They resided there for hundreds of years, and by the logic of, since they've been to it, they should be allowed to do it, we should build houses on that bluff, because it was done for hundreds of years before. So, think about making sure we take that jewel that exists for Costa Mesa and for not only our kids and our grandkids and our great-grandkids, but for the region's kids and grandkids and great-grandkids. Think about that impact and what that value is to them as you make your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Matt Garcia. I'm the president of HSS. From 2014, when U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service met with HSS at Fairview Park Flying Field, to present day, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's recommendations have been constant, and those recommendations were shared with city staff multiple times. We know because we did multiple public records requests to get email communications between the city and regulatory agencies very recently. And when we received the results, they were really informative, and we shared in great detail in our written submissions for public comment everything we learned. What we found was that city staff and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service had four relevant meetings relevant to this topic between December 2021 and March 2023. We found that U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service provided quite a few emails and documents documenting their views towards model aviation at Fairview Park. We found that despite all of city staff's attempts to solicit authoritative guidance from regulatory agencies, supporting staff's desire to close the flying field, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has continued to maintain constant recommendations for the flying field centered around reduction of noise from the RC airplanes, preventing intrusion into the vernal pools while they are wet, education slash training of model flyers, and enforcement of the permitting system. The fact of the matter is, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service does not think that the flying field is an incompatible use of Fairview Park. It is staff that believes it is incompatible, and the question is why? Despite the headwinds that we have faced, we are determined to work with the city and regulatory agencies to resume flying at Fairview Park in parallel with the master plan revision process and while searching for alternate flying sites, including evaluation of the east side of the Fairview Park. We see a path forward, and we have presented it in our written submissions. We are open to changes, but we felt it was important to provide with a starting point on what needs to happen next. We've provided modified controlling documents that have been redlined. We do not believe modifications to the city ordinance is needed at this time. We feel it's maximum, and that modifications of the flying field rules would allow us to move forward. We can address all of U.S. Fish and Wildlife's documented concerns. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else in the chambers that wishes to speak. We have people on Zoom?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. First speaker is Rob Dixon, please.
Mr. Dixon, you have the floor.
Good evening. I just wanted to give my support for Harbor Soaring Society and give a little personal anecdote. We've been out there, my kids and I are out there almost daily, and my son and I got a permit for that. We got a Harbor Soaring Society permit, or we got a permit from the city, went out there with a very nice model airplane, which we immediately crashed and have not been back since. However, both of my kids, we've got dozens of pictures of them watching the planes with fascination, and I think that there is a path forward. I think that, you know, Fairview Park is there for all of us, and that includes the folks who want complete preservation, and that includes the people who want to use it. And I think that we have to recognize that with the iterative process of the master plan, which I know is going through an update, and the history of the park, that we can find protective ways forward to continue to allow active and passive recreation. And active, I mean, is walking, and I know that maybe not is the code term of active, but I mean that there are kids out there riding bikes, and there are people who are walking and jogging and, and really enjoying the nature. You know, seeing the vernal pools so incredibly present recently has been a great reminder of what the park can be and is, and the wildlife, just seeing the birds and everybody flying around and, and all the bunnies out there. We got there very early in the morning and see coyotes and rabbits. It's just a wonderful place. So, I do want to protect those resources, but I also want to be, I think we should be balanced. And I think that we should find a way to accommodate uses that have historically been there that are not dangerous. So, you know, we talk about gliders, we talk about low-power electric motors, we talk about a permitting process, which limits the number and time and place of people flying. But I do think that we need to resist the temptation to just shut the park down, because anything that we do will hurt something. And I don't know if you guys watched, read Bloom County back in the old day of the comics about where they had a, one of the main characters is basically suspended from a tree because he didn't want to touch a blade of grass that he would hurt. I, I think we have to avoid that and find a way to be protective of the environment, protective of the habitat, and protective of the species, while also allowing safe uses that are, are well-controlled and permitted. So, I, I wish you guys luck with your decisions, and thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Mike Costello.
Mr. Costello, you have the floor. Mr. Costello?
If you can unmute yourself, please.
If you can unmute yourself, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
It took that long for the unmute option to show up.
Yeah, that's, that's Zoom.
I didn't hear you, sir.
I'm just commenting that that's the way Zoom is. Okay, you have the floor, though.
I was president of HSS before Matt, so during 2020, I was president. As part of the, the Board of Directors of HSS, I've been part of the, the process for over four years trying to redo our use agreement and hope that we can reach a mutually beneficial This topic seems to come up again and again and again, and it never goes anywhere. We recently participated in the OC Fairs Imaginology event, where we spoke to, I would guess, two or 3,000 local residents. Every one of them supported the model airplanes. Every one of, not, not every one of them, but a vast number of them asked why we aren't flying at the park. So the Costa Mesa public wants the airplanes back at the park. There are a few people, and I'm not sure what the numbers are, who would vote for birds over model airplanes. But in the, the four years that I've been a participant in this conversation, I've not seen any scientific evidence from anybody that says model airplanes scare birds. I think model airplanes are not understood by some people, and they want what they want. But Fairview Park is not a preserve. If you want it to be a preserve, put a chain link fence around the complete perimeter of it and ban human involvement completely. Then you'll have your nature preserved. And that means that the bird watchers cannot go in and look at the birds. So I, I don't know what we need to do, but I think we need to go back to the September 21 City Council decision to allow gliders back in the park, and let's move on. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Jeff L., please.
You have the floor, Mr. L.
Hi, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for letting us speak tonight. So I'm Jeff Little, a Costa Mesa resident and Harbor Soaring Society member. Just like to say, you know, as the previous person said, we were at Imaginology and built over, you know, 700 airplanes for little kids. And all of their parents, like they mentioned, you know, what do you guys do? Where do you fly? And we have to tell them, we definitely don't fly in Costa Mesa right now. And I hope you folks will vote on this and fly again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Henry Smith, please.
Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Good evening, City Council. Do you hear me okay?
Yes, perfectly.
I'm a past president for, of Harbor Soaring Society, probably for more years than I'd care to admit. And it's, it's my opinion that what's really required here is the compromise that's on the agenda now to leave the flying field open for gliders. The, if, if you want to make the park into a preserve, it's not, it's not a park anymore. And so, you know, I, and I can't really see a reason why, if we were careful about how we did it and planned it correctly, some of the park would be a preserve and part of the, part of the, and the rest of the park would remain a park for the city of Costa Mesa to use and enjoy. And in that park, it's my opinion that the field for gliders is a perfect fit. It's quiet, it's challenging, it's healthy, it's wholesome. People of all ages enjoy it. And, you know, it's, the Fish and Wildlife Service know that we've been out there for 60 years, and they also know that it doesn't really hurt the shrimp. And we've asked on numerous occasions for somebody to present some data that says model airplanes are har- harmful to birds, and to date, we haven't received any such data. If it really was harmful, some data would probably out there somewhere. If the, so either they found some data that says they're not harmful, or nobody's telling us anything, and I've looked and I couldn't find anything myself. So anyway, I, I think the proper thing is, is to be effective compromise, and the park can be a preserve in some areas, which it already is, and the rest of the park can remain a park, including a model airplane flying field for gliders. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Cynthia McDonald, please.
Ms. McDonald, you have the floor.
Good evening again. I support staff's recommendation that an assessment be completed and the flying field activity be suspended until the report is returned and the city council can evaluate its options. The Fairview Park vernal pools are unique. There are only five vernal pool complexes that remain in Orange County. Ninety percent of the vernal pools in California have been destroyed largely by human activity. The fact that we have not just one, but two species of fairy shrimp in Fairview Park tells us how special our vernal pools are and how important it is to protect not only the vernal pools, but the areas surrounding them. There is more than adequate documentation of the flyers landing, sometimes intentionally, in the vernal pools. The assessment will likely find that there has been a large resurgence of environmentally sensitive habitat in the park since it's been closed to flyers. You need only stand near the large vernal pool and observe and listen to the birds to know it. In addition, evidence of burrowing owls on the west side of the park is remarkable. Previously, they've only been seen on the east side, but the LAIST piece, which was posted yesterday, documents their presence on the west side. In addition, I, I would anticipate the assessment would document their presence, and the federal and state agencies would require a plan to protect this species as special concern. While I appreciate the Soaring Society's educational programs, I think it's time for them to find another location to practice their hobby, which I'm sure they can do. What cannot be done is to relocate the escha that supports the reproduction and foraging of the inhabitants and migrating critters in Fairview Park. So please have the assessment done, but be prepared to follow the original staff recommendation from March 21st, as also recommended by your advisory committee, to close the field and terminate the contract. Thank you.
Yes.
Next.
Madam Clerk.
Red Robach, please.
You have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we hear you.
Hi, I speak tonight on behalf of the HSS, both as a previous member, well, not as a member, as a user of the field, and as also someone with a master's degree in environmental health. I, both through my academic training and through various professional roles I've held, show deep concern for the environment. But what everyone has spoken with about are two in, not incongruent arguments. We care about birds and we care about model aircraft. The U.S. Wildlife Service has specifically made recommendations about limiting noise. HSS has made those suggestions into suggested rule of limiting to gliders. We care about birds, we care about vernal pools. How many vernal pools have been accidentally damaged by people trying to take bird photography? Probably some, however, that amount you would say is negligible compared to the benefit to birders. I would argue that the benefit towards so many young children, so many even UCI students, including myself, who went on to get advanced degrees, and I know there are others as well, would argue that the silent use of model aircraft that have been specifically placed in designated and flown from designated areas by specifically trained and permitted individuals who are specifically trained about the environmental hazards in the field would be just about the most controlled use, similar to any other use in any other state and federal park that's open to any use, even mountain biking, skiing, hiking. You can't hike anywhere in every state park. You're limited, you're required to follow rules, you can't ski anywhere, you're specifically required to park in certain areas, to go in certain areas. You can't fly any model aircraft. You can fly silent gliders when you're trained appropriately and permitted, and there's staff who acknowledge you and know the rules, and you know the rules, and it works both ways, and no species are damaged. And it's a benefit both to the young children who actually do not have many other places to go and continue to, bird watchers and other community. But if you want to close it and make it a full nature preserve, there's no, I would say, there's no disagreement that that's best for the environment, but that has to be complete access closed to no public, including bird watchers. So thank you again. I support the HSS, and I encourage you to as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And next speaker is call-in user one, please.
Call-in user one, you have the floor.
You have a hard decision here. You've had speakers on both sides that have made some very relative points. However, in the report that was submitted, I believe in the April 21st meeting, they made some specific mention through the Fish and Wildlife and the state that if certain things occurred, there would be the possibility of fines occurring. And my question is, if those fines occur, who's held responsible for those? Harbor Soaring or the city? We know that the park has very sensitive birds, and it has flourished in the last six months, especially with the rain. So we're not talking about a park that you're going to go out there and have three, four-wheelers and, and that type of thing. This is a very special type of park. I think the soaring and the airplanes is a wonderful hobby, and I support that hobby. I just don't support it at the locations that they're at right now. And I agree with the speaker before, if you're going to do another report and get another expert opinion, I hope it, it is something that you can accept and make the hard decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Carrie Bozenalik.
Hello, good evening, City Council. Thank you for considering this issue. Can you please confirm that you can hear me?
I can.
Great, thank you. So I emailed the council this afternoon with my comments. I realized I missed the noon deadline, so I'm not sure if you read it. I'm just going to go ahead and use my calendar now as my comment. I'm sorry, wasn't I, because I have a noise side. I am commenting on this item regarding the flying activity at Fairview. And I'm asking that the city council reject the staff recommendation to continue suspension of the flying field activity at Fairview Park, and instead, please approve the alternative option to reinstate the flying field to gliders in the current location west of Placentia with the conditions identified in the general. And I would expect that to happen while the city conducts any environmental assessment, environmental compatibility or resource assessment, so it can determine next steps. So my two main points are, first, I couldn't find any support in the attachments that actually say that there's specific evidence in support of the staff recommendation to continue to suspend glider. US FWS and CDFW were rightly concerned about protecting natural resources in the park, but I noted that neither goes so far as either direct or request that the city prevent all glider flying. Instead, US FWS listed various mitigation measures the city can impose to make glider flying compatible with natural resource protection. Further, I noted that the attachments actually, nothing in the attachments actually show any existing specific evidence that glider flying is in fact incompatible with protecting habitat or species in the park. I'm in favor of a compatibility or resource assessment, but I'm asking that the city, please don't put the cart before the horse in making decisions and then doing the assessment later. Next main point is I think the city should consider the impacts on the community. Unlike those natural resource agencies, the city has an obligation to consider community and public benefits as it considers what to allow in Fairview Park. Specifically, I noted that in the 1998 master plan, that plan cited model glider flying as being one of the supporting factors in the public use objectives for Fairview Park. And I think earlier, the council noticed that my sign came up and commented that he's interested in flying at Fairview Park. I note that he's commented on that a number of times, and he was there because he asked, he gets to ask his parents to go there because he's interested in flying at Fairview Park. And his main interest is that he can ride his bike there, and it gives him something to do that he could do with his friends locally. And I point out that he can't do that if the flying field is outside on the west side. Also looking bigger picture, I think it's telling that the general report fails to give any consideration to the community benefits of allowing flying in the.
Ma'am, ma'am, that's your three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much.
You bet, thanks.
Next speaker is James R.
James R., you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is James Robertson, and thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I'm a former resident of Costa Mesa, and I am here to speak in, in support of the flying field. But I'm also deeply concerned about the environment and deeply concerned about endangered species. I, I support the use of the flying field at the park, partly because I, I, I don't believe that it is any more harmful than other uses of the park, such as, as people jogging or, or, or people with, with, with dogs in the park. I, 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 for one, I can't, I can't speak for all flyers, but I for one would be willing to abide by restrictions that would help to preserve wildlife in the park, such as not flying when the vernal pools are, are wet or even damp, so only flying when the vernal pools are dry, for example, and by following appropriate, you know, training and permitting requirements. Thank you, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Kevin K., please.
Kevin K., you have the floor. Kevin? Somebody?
I can't talk.
Are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi, Kevin, we can hear you.
Oh, terrific. Um, yeah, I want to speak tonight, and thank you, Mayor and City Council, for listening to us Costa Mesa residents. I'd like to voice my approval for, for the, the flying of the airplanes at Fairview Park. It's, uh, my understanding that, that the airplane people have really winnowed down what they're, what they used to fly. I think they've made great concessions. I understand that they won't be flying any helicopters or drones, no ducted fan airplanes, even propeller-driven airplanes. They're off the table. What we're talking about is silent gliders. It seems like, uh, big concessions have been made by the club, and I think that they should be able to fly. And that's my comments for tonight. Thank you all.
The next speaker is Richard Huffman, please.
Richard Huffman, you have the floor.
Good evening, thank you. I was at Earth Day at City Hall last week, and I picked up a, a brochure about the vernal pools that is printed up by the city, and it's also available on the website. available on the website. And I'd like to refer to some of the things that are in that brochure. The seven vernal pools within Fairview Park are some of the only lasting examples of this ecosystem within California. Because of this, many of the plants and animals found in vernal pools are considered rare, threatened, or endangered by state and federal resource agencies. Vernal pools are rare in Southern California because of the unique geologic conditions needed for them to form and human development of the coastal areas. Per the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, up to 98% of vernal pool habitat has been destroyed in Southern California. That's easy to see. If you drive the freeway from Orange County up to Los Angeles, it's nothing but concrete and highways and housing. There's very little natural habitat left. That's why some of us are so concerned about preserving this last little bit of ecosystem. The fact that the burrowing owls are back in the vicinity of the vernal pool one and the others, I think is evidence of the restricted activity for the flying club for the last couple of years because of COVID, and now habitat is available, and species are starting to re-enter. What a special situation we have to be the stewards of such an amazing habitat. And it's essential with this city council to show some leadership in the field of conservation and preservation. I urge you to get out there before you decide on this, to actually spend some time. Go spend an hour hanging out in Fairview Park, and enjoy the quiet, the animals, and give careful consideration to what Jay Humphrey was saying, the future generations. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
And the next speaker is Jim Erickson, please.
Mr. Erickson, you have the floor.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Fantastic. As a long-term resident, a lifetime resident here, I've had the pleasure of forming a long-term relationship with the city. Many people in the city, staff, officials, I appreciate all your work. As we all know, in long-term relationships, honesty is the best policy, and the truth is important. The truth is important despite the discomfort it might bring. It's important despite the biases it might destroy. We owe ourselves the truth. And as such, we need to acknowledge that Harbor Soaring Society has been a good steward of Fairview Park since before it was Fairview Park. We need to acknowledge that gliders are ensconced in the general plan. We need to acknowledge that gliders are affirmed by the vote of the people under Measure AA in 2016, and we need to acknowledge that gliders were permitted to fly in Fairview Park by vote of this council in 2021. We don't really understand why gliders aren't flying in Fairview Park right now. We can understand the need or desire or interest in making a change, but we can't understand any truth behind prohibiting a fair and appropriate use of a city park while that consideration is underway. And so I would urge you not to continue doing that. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep. Next speaker, Andy Campbell, please.
Mr. Campbell, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you hearing me tonight. I loved hearing Mr. Harper quote Plato tonight. My son's a philosophy major, so love hearing those comments. I do have two quotes for you to give tonight in addition to Plato's quote. These are found in the Harbor Soaring Society October 21 newsletter. The first one is from Vince Paradise. "The glider solution from the council is either a clever one that doesn't look like they threw us out, but keeps us more or less out of practical operation for this foreseeable future, or they simply don't know much about gliders and thought it was an okay compromise." I also have my second quote is from Henry Smith, who spoke tonight in the same article. "From an aviation standpoint, the field as operated before the shutdown was not very useful for gliders. 400-foot hard ceiling is either not attractive to pilots flying large gliders." By the way, that 400 feet is the John Wayne imposed ceiling for HSS. In my interactions with HSS, I don't believe they're really interested in gliders, and that was evident tonight. I think what they truly want is return of runway gliding, which is evident by several speakers. And I hope, I think they are hoping to keep their foot in the door to return to motorized flying. Several members of HSS spoke about, you know, fondness of wildlife, but I would ask that they also look at Migratory Bird Treaty Act and the Endangered Species Act. There are many studies. I'm amazed that the pillars of STEM at HSS can't find some of these studies. I provided hundreds of pages of documents of studies to council last week in an email to all of you. So, what I would ask is to support the city's staff's recommendation. Have MIG evaluate not only gliders, but have them look at all flying activity, because I think that's ultimately where HSS would like to land. Let them bring to the surface all the studies that are out there, and let them come to an evaluation that everyone can support. Thank you for that consideration tonight.
Thank you.
Cassius Rutherford, please.
Commissioner Rutherford, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good evening. I don't want to reiterate. I know a lot of wise words have already been said on this. I've already shared my opinions. But I just wanted to speak briefly on process. Councilmember Reynolds said something at the beginning of the meeting that I want to come back to, you know, when community groups are, you know, looking to engage with the city, you know, create activations, go out there and do things, you know, like we've seen Harbor Soaring Society do recently. You know, I do want to acknowledge that Matt has renewed their commitment to preservation and engagement in the park. So, you know, I just think it's worth asking ourselves, you know, how should groups be treated when they approach the city and work together? And I think that should be, you know, a guiding philosophy and methodology with this decision you make tonight and with any group that approaches you going forward. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Pooni Sind.
You have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak in support of Harbor Soaring Society. I've been volunteering at the, with the Fairview Park Alliance every month, and I have tried to keep an open mind and listen to all arguments. And basically, I think there is a very clear compromise available. Flying silent gliders does not harm the environment, and like I have personally seen how committed Harbor Soaring Society is to ensuring that the park and all the creatures and the birds that are there are kept safe and we fly responsibly. It's been a little bit upsetting to hear some comments today about the intentions of Harbor Soaring Society. That's not been my impression, working with both sides of this debate. And I really urge the council that the current compromise of, you know, letting Harbor Soaring Society fly silent gliders, you know, higher up in the sky and not harming the wildlife that lies below, is definitely a genuine solution that's going to be good for the city and it's going to be good for the park as well. Thank you.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment. I've got a motion. So, as much as this decision was made already at the September 20, September 2021 meeting, and there's been no request for reconsideration by any of the council members who voted in this, in favor of that motion. The motion, just to recapitulate, was to evaluate the flying activity during the master plan update, consider all sites, and permit gliders from going forward, permit gliders only going forward. I would move to receive and file this report with the direction that, the additional direction that the city staff develop policies and procedures regarding permitting of flyers, training of flyers, enforcement of the rules that are put in place, monitoring of the flying, the limitations on use, including the conditions of the field and the timing of use, and general rules of use. So, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, you know, just briefly, thank you for everybody who spoke, spent a lot of time on this. Thank you for the staff that brought it up, and I think the decision was a good one back in September 2021, and I actually didn't vote for it. But oddly enough, in listening, I've come to agree with the council majority and the decision that they made. And I also think just as a matter of policy, council decisions should be just implemented unless a council member who voted against it, sorry, in favor of it, wishes to bring it back for reconsideration. Do you have anything further to say for the second?
Sure, I will. Well, since quoting seems to be in fashion tonight, I'll quote the inimitable Yogi Berra and say it's like deja vu all over again and again. You're correct. We made this decision. It was a very hard decision. It was a, dare I say again, a robust discussion among council, and it lasted for hours with different motions, but we made that decision. And I think that policy decisions should be respected. I don't see any compelling evidence to change course now or any kind of sense of urgency. And moreover, I recognize that our community has a lot of impassioned opinions about this particular topic. And I think the appropriate forum for that discussion and that debate is in our master plan update process. So, we are going through with that. There will be some plan that's going to be proposed. Ultimately, it will come back to council for consideration, and we'll make a decision at that point. But for now, I think that the decision that we made in 2021 should remain.
Any other council members wish to be heard? Councilmember, I think Reynolds was the next, and then we'll go councilmember Marr, and then whoever else wants to speak.
Thank you. I do have a quick question for staff, and then may have a request. The staff recommendation included a recommendation for an environmental compatibility and biological resource assessment to be conducted by the consultant we have leading the master plan process. Is that additional work to what we've already contracted them for as part of the master plan process?
No, that's included in the current scope.
So, they would already be doing that work?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so just to confirm, because I had understood differently before, the current master plan process occurring over the next, I think we're at two or three months in, so occurring over the next 13 months or so, 16 months or so, will include an environmental compatibility and biological resource assessment?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to ask that we include that if it wasn't already, but not needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marr.
Yeah, I don't need to speak just for the sake of speaking. I made the initial motion in September 2021, and that's what I would continue to like to have happen. At the time, gliders were compromised, but they were also very much in keeping with the master plan, with US Fish and Wildlife's recommendations, and with literally every other document I could find at the time. And my opinion has not changed. I think the motion does a good job of capturing the ways in which we should restrict access based on any new information that comes about or any other environmental, if we find an endangered species, if there's something that comes up, absolutely, we should take restrictive action. But my original motion from a year and a half ago is still valid, and I agree with the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Harper?
I agree with the other council members' comments, and it's been 19 months since September 21. It was all of COVID. We shut down the gliders. The question is, and I'm not, I'm not saying you have to put it in the motion, but can we get some commitment from staff as to when they're allowed to fly again?
The major challenge is due to all the wet weather that we had over the summer, that the vernal pool is still quite full. And if one of the requirements were that we not fly until it's dry, that would be kind of our predicating demarcation.
Maybe I didn't, wasn't clear, Mr. Minter. I really want to know when, when would you officially open up the fields again with what's listed in the motion?
We would have all of the policy, the agreement with the Harbor Soaring Society in place by the time the vernal pool dried to where they would be able to fly.
Well, do you have to wait? I mean, you could still have, you're still going to have a requirement where they can't fly when it's wet.
Correct. So, we wouldn't be waiting until it was dry to do that.
So, how many, how many months, days, years until you have a policy in place and you say to them, you're free to fly, subject to what's in their policy? That's a answer of 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. That's what I'm looking for.
We would conservatively estimate that pools would start to dry out by July, July 1.
Not when the pools would dry.
Okay, I'll jump in. So, the policy, I think we can have it done within 30 days, probably safe to say?
30 to 45 days, okay? And then once, but, and so that would be the policy. We would work with HSS on the permit, so that the permit's in place. However, the flying would not resume until the wet season's over, the vernal pools are dry, correct? So, let's say summer, July, whenever we've observed.
Again, not my question. It's really about when do we have a policy in place?
30 to 45 days.
Yeah.
Good?
Yes, July 1.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Councilmember Camaro?
So, I just kind of have a brief suggestion, and I think I've already brought this up before, but my suggestion is to kind of look at how the Orange County model engineers run their program. And I would suggest that you model the way the model engineers operate. Seems to be very successful. It's not very invasive. It's welcomed by the community. They're having great success. They themselves have stated that they have the most interest that they've ever had. And I think if you go by the way that they're operating, you would see open arms and a welcome success. So, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? You're still lit up.
Sorry. Yeah, I asked my question. I'm going to add some comments here. This has, I think this item, we've had a lot of hard items in front of us. I think this has been one of the toughest for me, because it's an item, and I think this is pretty rare, that sort of puts into conflict two of the things that are most important to me as a resident, as a person, as a council member, and that is our natural resource and then community spaces and recreational activities. I am not going to be supporting the item. I'm, of course, you know, we're moving forward with the master plan. I'm glad that this environmental assessment will be part of that, and I think that's going to be a really important study. I have a lot of faith in the consultant team that we've hired as part of the master plan. What I'm concerned about is how much time has been spent to date, but then how much time we'd still be allocating for staff on something that's not a direct part of developing and implementing the master plan. I think that's really where we need to get, and I would prefer that we focus staff's attention on establishing and implementing the master plan. The, and I also, I think the motion sort of leaves us where we were back in, what was it, 2021? And I understand it's been a frustrating time to get here. I think what we, what we said then was... And I understand it's been a frustrating time to get here. I think what we what we said then was, you know, establish a program that addresses all of the the environmental concerns and the work that staff has done with many, many, many hours with experts, collaboration with members of HSS, community members, our committee. They were trying to find a pathway to enabling the the glider activity while addressing all of the impacts and and they didn't find a path. I think that's why we're back here is is the the challenge was there is no path to address all of those, all of those impacts. And so I'm concerned that we continue to spend a lot of time on this issue, which we will be revisiting again when we have the master plan, the draft master plan in front of us. So I won't be supporting that item for for that reason. This is, as as we've heard from some of the other speakers, this is an incredibly incredibly unique natural resource we have here in Costa Mesa. I think we heard ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of vernal pools in California gone, but we have some in Costa Mesa. And so my preference is to err on the side of protection of those natural resources that we're we're incredibly lucky to have. So I I while I I absolutely support staff in their in their recommendation here. I understand this is an incredibly challenging position for us to be in to try to decide between these two resources, public space, recreation space and natural resources. And I'm I'm hopeful and have a lot of faith that that staff and our consultant team will will develop a program going forward that minimizes those those impacts. I just wish they could focus their attention on the master plan going forward so we get that done. So, thank you.
All right. Well, before we call for the question, oh, sorry, Manuel, before we call for the question, I'm going to, we're going to hear from Manuel Chavez. The great, great council member from District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and no worries for missing it. I turned it on as remember Reynolds was speaking. I just wanted to reiterate a point that was made earlier, which is just that this vote was taken in September twenty twenty one. And I think there's been a lot of discussions these past few months regarding the roles of committees and the roles of council and other things. And I think it's a it's a good reminder that it's council that sets priorities and it's council that sets objectives. And for whatever reason, maybe pandemic, maybe staff free staff time, may it be lack of staff, we didn't really move forward what we voted on. And I'm not going to dwell on why, and I don't think that necessarily matters, but I think what matters today is reiterating the point that council sets the priorities of the city. And I think the confusion in revisiting a vote we took two years ago has created delays in staff times that could go on to other things. I know particularly in my district, we've been dying for park expansions. And this isn't the only item that's that's been causing delays in our city, but I think it's important to recognize that when we take a vote as council, it should be followed through. In that regards, I do want to briefly comment on Fairview, on the master plan in particular and Measure AA in particular. A lot of people using that as the founding document and I find that quite problematic for a couple of reasons. The the fact is that Measure A was a ballot initiative that was designed to save every park from becoming a sport complex. And there's a lot of things in Measure AA that are quite honestly contradictory. We have the use of trails, we have a creation of a museum, we have all these different activities that are allowed under Measure AA. But we haven't really studied to see if they're actually compatible with Fairview Park and how we want to look at it in the future. So I'm happy we're going to be focusing on a master plan. I'm optimistic that with this vote behind us, the Fairview Steering Committee could focus on the master plan, which I think ultimately is a better use of their time and their expertise. But I just thought it's important to recognize that this is an opportunity to explain once again that it's not committees that set agendas, it's not staff, it's it's council. But with that, I support the motion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good points. I just have one quick question. When we, the way I understand it is the master plan coming back to us, the timing is about eighteen months, starting in February. So when we bring the master plan back to us, will it include a report that assesses what what is happening with the with the fly field?
The scope of the original contract did not have a specific report designated for the flying field. However, it will include an environmental compatibility and and land use assessment and biological resource assessment for all of the park for all activities. So it was not called out to do a specific flying field analysis, but it will be doing an analysis of flying field as an activity just like any other activity at the park.
Not sure what that is.
So we didn't have additional resources set aside for an enhanced study of the flying field or compatibility of the flying field.
No, no, I, yeah, I get it. I'm just, what I'm trying to understand and and I'm ready to, we're ready to call for the question. I could feel it, but is I what I want to do is so that coincides, if you talk about July as being when we can open it if it's dry and then you go about another year. You know, you get to, you get to about when we're going to, we're expected approximately to see the the master plan update report. And what I'd like to see in it, and if we have to increase the scope, is an actual, not just a hypothetical, but an actual analysis that's done of the actual activity that we're approving here. Okay? So I hope that was clear. If it's not, we could talk off off the floor. It's okay. We don't need to talk anymore about it. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries six one with Councilmember Reynolds voting no.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, guys, everybody for your hard work. Thank you for the public for your input. And unless there's something anybody else has, we're journeying the meeting in honor and memory of two great Costa Masons, Dick Maron and Gordon Bowley.